Okay, it's 1:30. We're gonna begin the work session. I don't suppose, do we need to look at changing anything on the agenda? I'm hoping whatever I printed off is still the agenda without a lot of additions.
There shouldn't have been any additions or items beyond the 30, that was yesterday.
Okay, okay. I did notice, public comment is at the beginning, it's usually at the end, has that been?
You just printed it before we reloaded it.
That's reasonable, okay, alright, alright, well, let's go ahead and begin then. Item A, under governing body, number one, appointment of planning and zoning commissioner for the Ward 4 seat. Just tonight. It is, but all my notes are on, all my notes are on the previous agenda. When things get changed at the last minute, always, okay, so we're gonna move that till just tonight. Councilwoman McCoy is not here, so that item will go to tonight. I'll look, I'll just vacillate back and forth between the two agendas, and if I have anything that doesn't match up. Okay, number one, amendment to the Villarica Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Alcohol Beverage Section 4-37, special use permit, Attorney Kevin Drummond. Yes, sir, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 1A is sort of related to a later item that's on the agenda. Each year, the city awards a contract to a vendor who provides sales at city events that are held across the street here. And this year, you'll be asked later about a contract with Lost Cowboys. Our current special events ordinance only allows the sale of beer and wine. I was asked if they could sell margaritas also, and my review of the ordinance would not allow that. That is not beer or wine, so it currently would not be allowed. So, the amendment just changes, you can see where it struck out beer and/or wine to alcohol. That would allow, whatever vendors chosen would be allowed to sell whatever their license allows them to sell. So, if they only have a beer or wine license, they could only sell beer, wine. If they have a beer, wine, and liquor license, they could sell all three.
Any questions from the council, from Mr. Drummond? When it comes right down to it, the one change is that they can have margaritas. Can they have anything, or it's just the addition of margaritas to beer and wine?
It'd be anything that their license allows them to sell, which would be any type of mixed drink, plus the beer, beer, wine, or liquor, if this is passed.
Okay, alright. Anyone? I guess you're done with that one. Thank you. Quick question, did the mental health get pulled? That's why that's off, okay. Alright, second item, Mere Lake South Harbor Unit, what is that, 11A?
A2.
A2, final plat?
We were just trying to figure out if the first item is going to go in the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, and we got no discussion. I don't think we can with the alcohol, don't we, do we even, let me look at the, I don't have the night agenda before me because I knew it was gonna change, it's never what it is now. Does that require a public hearing?
It's an ordinance change, so I would allow a public hearing for that.
Okay, that makes sense, okay, so it can't be a consent item anyway, so that'll move till tonight.
Well, I mean, Kevin, did a public hearing have to get notice for it?
No, because I don't think technically we have to have a public hearing, but I would.
But it's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so 2A, the Mere Lake South Harbor, this is the final plat.
I may need Bobby's help before this is over with, but at some point in the past, the, there was a rezoning of Mere Lake subdivision, and South Harbor 2A was not part of that rezoning, although at some point, the conditions of that rezoning got placed on their plat. The city received a letter from their lawyer late last year complaining about that, so there was some back and forth. And what the city is proposing is to change the conditions as shown on the cover sheet, which would be heated, the first plat did not have heated square foot footage. The proposed plat would have 2,600 square foot heated square footage, minimum of 3,000 square foot house. An average house for the subdivision of 3,100 square foot, so from the outside, I don't know that you'll be able to see a change in the requirements, but it would change something from the builder's perspective.
Any questions from the council? Yes.
So, I read in here, or read in here, excuse me, that they're talking about a hardship in order to change this requirement? Is that the reason for them wanting to do it?
That's what the lawyer brought up in their letter, yes. But I guess what they ultimately ended up agreeing to is pretty close to what we have.
Well, then, but if it's so close, then why are we looking to, to change what's the requirement for it? I mean, you see, so if we, if it is so close, and it's not gonna make that big of a difference, then why is this even coming before us?
I think it will make a difference on some of the smaller lots, because we're looking at an average square foot house.
But my, so when I'm looking at the map, it looks like these houses are on prime real estate, being on the golf course. And I'll be honest with you, if I buy a house right next to one of these at $750,000, I'm not gonna be real happy if the house right next to me is sold for a substantial amount less. It just for me, I mean, what's the price difference? Have they mentioned anything like that?
I can't answer that.
Yeah, because I've, I've also heard a little bit of concern in regard to, I'm assuming they knew the size of the property when they decided which houses they were going to put on it, and what size, and they knew the minimum square footage, correct? They knew what it was going in, so the hardship, if I'm articulating this correctly, isn't really a hardship other than they couldn't place, and I'm not saying it doesn't affect economics, but they could not place as many houses at what has been the minimum square footage for that area. Does that make sense, is that accurate?
I don't think we're changing the number of houses, because the plat's, it's still platted the same way.
Well, Kevin, though, is it platted based upon what is required of them, or what they're proposing, though? Or has it already been platted?
That might be a Bobby question.
Okay, so the plat's already been, alright, so the plat's already been approved? And so, we're just asking for the stipulations that are on the cover sheet to be changed?
Good afternoon, y'all. Let me give you the background on South Harbor 2A. South Harbor 2A was not part of the zoning master plan revamping of Mere Lake that has North Woods and Water Mist and all that, because it had been platted just before the downturn happened. In other words, there's a section of street in there that's been, that's been in there forever. But, when we, when we were going through this thing and negotiating with the owners, we knew that, A, it'd been years and years and years since anything had been inspected in there. All the infrastructure had to be re-inspected, re-tested, to be sure everything was gonna hold up. So, we decided, we being Mr. Barber, myself, and Tracy, that we would just make them re-record the plat, which that, the re-recording date starts the maintenance bond period on the infrastructure. And without that, we had no way to tell, we were still gonna make them do a maintenance bond on it. But in doing all this, we got to thinking, and this was my fault, because it was my, it was my idea to do this. Even though it was not part of the master plan renewal, when we went to record that final plat, I wanted to put the conditions that were placed on the bigger house units in the revision on this, because, I'll be honest with you, and this is exactly, Tracy will quote me on this. I said, "If we go in there and let them build 1,500, 1,600 square feet houses in South Harbor 2A, South Harbor Unit 1 is gonna come to City Hall and not only kill us, but burn the building down." And that's exactly why we did it, and the owner at the time was completely good with it. But they had Heatherland Homes decided they wanted out of all the lots in 2A. And the company they were talking to at the time was questioning the size of those houses and being able to market them in that unit. Hence, that's why it's come back. They're claiming a hardship that they can't meet the strict conditions that I had placed on the plat when we had re-recorded. That's where we are.
Okay, Bobby, I'm seeing site conditions and proposed site conditions, but the only difference I see between those two is a two-story house plan, 3,000 square foot minimum's been pulled out. Other than that, they're almost identical.
They're really, really close. And I, for the life of me, I haven't been in on any of this negotiation other than to suggest to the owner that he needed to get his attorney to write the city a letter, and, you know, and asking for if there was any wiggle room in doing this. But, as I understand it, there's not a whole lot different from what they, what they want and what we have recorded.
Why are they pulling the two-story house plan minimum out?
I have no idea.
What is a two-story house plan minimum after we change it?
It's like 3,100 square feet, I believe.
The average square foot goes to 3,000, it was 3,100. So, the house.
It was 3,100, it was dropping to 3,000. So, it's not, you know.
So, they're saying various reasons for the hardship. Achieving the square footage requirements due to various reasons. So, you're saying those various reasons have to do with the marketing?
I believe so, yes.
What's your professional opinion?
Well, you know, like I said a minute ago, I, you know, we were upscaling the other neighborhoods when we redid the master plan. And I just thought that if we don't put some kind of good conditions on 2A, because at the time, they could go in and build 1,500 square foot homes in there, without any question, because everything's set on the original zoning for it. So, we took a chance and upped the game.
Mayor, if I, so, alright, so, the zoning conditions that we imposed on the 2A were not conditions that were actually imposing them in zoning, and I think that's my first question concern.
You are absolutely correct.
Alright, and, but administratively, we decided that we're gonna impose those conditions on them.
And the owners of record, we met, we talked, they were in complete agreement to do that.
At the time, they consented to that? Okay.
But then they stepped out, right? They stepped out, and it's a new?
Well, I think Kevin Spindell is still in the game at some level, the owners, when we re-recorded it, yes.
And so, now, we're faced with a, with a situation where if we, they've come back with their own set of conditions, basically, they're counter offer to our offer, and they're saying they essentially want 3,000 square foot instead of 3,100 square foot, and they don't want to have to build two-story houses. So, you're gonna have approximately a 3,000 square foot ranch-style house. Okay. I don't.
It's a little bit weird that an official zoning action did not take place to put those conditions on there when they re-recorded the plat.
I mean, there's, I mean, so you're talking about the 2021 rezoning that we went through?
Yes.
So, I mean, the conditions that apply to this one were back in 99 or 98, whenever it was originally rezoned. Is that, I mean, any conditions or whatever the zoning?
When it was originally rezoned, we're talking back in 2007, 2008.
Okay, I thought it was older than that, but, okay.
Yeah, and they were, you know, I had a copy, well, the city's got a copy of that original final plat. There were no conditions on it.
Okay.
Anywhere.
So, they, so the conditions that, that administratively were imposed on them, they've agreed to, except for this change from 3,100 to 3,000, and two-story to the single story?
I believe you're correct, yes.
Tracy, sorry.
Just a little bit of more background on this. They're still wanting to do two-story homes, but they wanna be able to bring that down to the 2,600 square foot. And where all this kinda got in the mix here is they proposed a couple plans to us, the people that are looking to buy this section, that only had about 2,700, 2,800 square foot of heated space in a two-story building. We denied them plans and said you have to have at least 3,000 square foot in the two-story. Well, their argument was, well, it doesn't specify heated square footage. And so, it's kind of, the industry standard is if you say you got a 3,000 square foot home, you're talking about heated square footage, but it didn't have that in the verbiage. So, that gave them the, you know, the kind of the end to say, well, we're gonna build that 3,000 square foot home, but 400 of it is gonna be a garage. So, that's kind of where, that's kind of the backstory of how all this came into play here. And then, we wanted to put into that new verbiage, the, you know, that it had to be heated square footage.
Okay, so, the conditions that administratively were posed on them were 3,100 square feet, heated square footage. Now, they're saying they're only gonna do 3,000 total square footage, 2,600 heated, okay.
The previous did not mention heated square footage, period.
Right, right, I understand that. But they've agreed to do 2,600 heated, 3,000 total, okay, I'm just trying to make, that's all I have.
But our plan was, our number was based on heated. In Florida, you say air, under air, air conditioning, but, so we're not talking a thousand difference. What I'm looking at here is not, okay, is not the same, okay, alright.
And if you'll notice, excuse me, but if you'll notice.
Here you go, ranch house.
House plan, it just says 2,600 square feet. It should say heated, because if you look on the plat here, it specifies heated on the new plat.
Okay.
They put up there. That holds into the point where it's gotta be livable space, then, I'm sorry.
Tracy, use the mic.
That holds it that it has to be livable space in that 2,600 square feet, or heated and cooled space. But it is on that final plat, and we'll get that cover sheet corrected before this evening.
That's all I have, any, any other questions from the council? Okay, we'll move on then.
So, we need a, do we, do we need to, is that, is that, is that an item that can even be put on consent, or?
We gotta bring the final plat back to get signed anyway, so it wouldn't be a big deal, but.
So, this was just a discussion?
So.
I'm unclear on this now.
It has a motion with it, so, there's a motion at the bottom of this, it can't be consent if we're, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't put this on consent, this is a significant change over there.
I agree, man.
Right, so, okay, alright, so, we'll move on, community development, B1, Gold Dust Recreation HVAC Replacement.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Afternoon.
This item is a budgeted item, and we are within that requested budget that was approved by council in our current budget year. We currently have a HVAC unit that supplies the left side of the recreation department at Gold Dust Facilities with heating and cooling. That unit is very old, and I would, I would probably say that it was original to the building. It's part of the boiler system. It's very large, and it's very difficult as far as its location within the building. It's in a utility closet, so it's gonna require a good bit of work and renovation to get that one out and a new one in. Staff reached out to three different HVAC companies that were local, and we received two quotes. One of them fell within that budget, which is KBS Heating and Cooling. They have quoted $27,118 to replace that unit with a like unit. With similar qualities and abilities, it's a train Odyssey split system. We had budgeted $27,500. I've attached those quotes that we did receive for verification, and staff would like to request to engage with KBS to have this unit replaced.
Questions from council?
Yes, such a substantial difference between the bids, why is one of them so much higher?
I couldn't answer that without speculating.
They had the same RFP, right?
Yes, they had the same quotes, we met with the company, and if you, they're using union labor. I do know Action Electric is a unionized company, and their equipment was a different brand of equipment, but with the same abilities and capabilities mechanically.
Have we used KBS before?
We used KBS, yes.
Okay.
I mean, if it's as old as a building, you don't even have to give me a sales pitch.
It's currently not operational, the, one of the bigger motors, the brackets, have failed and are compromised, and it's almost a danger to have that unit running with the failed bracket. So, we have fabricated some brackets, but they weren't designed specifically for this motor, so it's not an ideal situation with it currently in its current condition.
So, my only question is, because y'all have it off, what have you been doing over there?
It still stays pretty cool because of the weather, we'll open a window.
So, you need to be exercising or something, okay, alrighty. Any, anybody not okay with consenting to us putting this on the consent agenda? We good, okay, alright, that'll be consent item number one.
Thank you.
Alright, B2, ABL-03-24, Public Supermarkets. This has to do with alcohol beverages, correct?
Yes.
Good to see you.
Hi.
Welcome back, I haven't seen you since you came back to the city.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here. Alright, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'll be here to present the application for Publics Supermarkets Incorporated for a retail package malt beverages and wine at their new location of 103 Mere Lake Connector, Suite 200. They have complied with the city's ordinance in regards to legal notification and requirements, passed the background check for the licensee, and they currently hold a valid alcohol license at the current location, they need to apply for a new one for a licensee change because the license can't be transferred.
Does that have to do with who's operating it, or the location, the fact it's not transferable because they're at a different location?
Who's operating it, who's gonna be listed as the licensee?
Okay, so the licensee themselves is changing, got it?
Okay, this does bring up a problem that we encountered already. Mere Lake Connector, we didn't name that Mere Lake Connector, the council named it Villarica Parkway.
That's a different topic.
And we have a problem, if everything starts trying to get locked in at Mere Lake Connector, we're gonna have a problem, because we gave it a different name. Somehow, we got to get that all fixed before it gets too far along.
So, I don't see that as related to the particular topic, however, it's all fresh on our mind. Is there something we have to do here now with this? Because that's a whole separate problem we gotta deal with, isn't it?
Good afternoon again, y'all. I was hoping to only be up here for like four or five items, but it looks like it's gonna be a long day. I'm working on the name change. The problem is, if we had decided on Villarica Parkway on the front end, it would be done already. But tax assessor has got it shown as Mere Lake Connector, and we've already been through it. I've been in touch with the post office, with 911, and Mike Hagan with Fuqua is just freaking out. He doesn't want anything changed right now, because Public, the Publix store and the bank that goes with, I mean, the bank of stores that goes with Publix is the only addressing that's got Mere Lake Connector on it. We're gonna wait and let them get open, then we're gonna make the change. Because getting deliveries and all that stuff in there, if we try to do it now, it's gonna get everything tangled up, and it's gonna be a mess.
But we will be able to change it?
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah, I guess that's.
We may not have to know this, but how did this happen? Because we've known for quite a while, that was just kind of the name to give it, to have something to call it other than the cutthroat or something.
Throughout the entire process of this project, I'm usually the one that sits, who establishes the street addressing with the approval of the tax assessor and E911, US Post Office and all that. What happened was, when I sent a, an early plat to the tax assessor with the street in red, I wrote them in and scanned it and sent it to her, she took it literally what was on the plat as Mere Lake Connector, and that's, she hasn't made any of the changes yet, because I got to it in time. But, the plan is, as soon as Publix gets opened, we're gonna make the change. Because you gotta notify everybody, you gotta put it in the paper, you gotta, you gotta do, it's just a hassle to have to do that, but we need to do it, and the plan is, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, when are they gonna open?
I understand last week in May, close to that.
So, they're gonna open in May, and we're gonna fix this thing in June?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, Bobby, though, wouldn't it be easier to do it before they open? Why, why wait till after they open?
I think it's the deliveries and everything, didn't you say?
Because it takes longer than a week to make the change. I mean, by the time you go through all the steps necessary, and everybody's happy with it, he just don't want to get anything in the way.
I imagine they're doing their, everything that has to be done last minute. I mean, even think about it with a home to get your CO and everything else. I can't even imagine how complicated it is with a shopping center like that, and everything that they're doing, you know, to get set up and ready to open. So, I don't have a problem as long as it, as long as it doesn't stay connector.
We had thought, and we looked at it, without me going into my file and pulling up the street addressing thing that I sent them, we originally thought that the, there were three parcels that were involved on Mere Lake Connector, and none of them had had permits issued until I got reminded, that, when I, wait a minute, Publix has a Mere Lake Connector address, and I'm like, oh, God. So, anyway, yeah, we'll get to it.
The only other thing, Bobby, I would be concerned about is then, Publix comes in, and then you have all the suites in there. And so, if we do it in June, is that gonna be quick enough to get ahead of them? Or we're gonna have to wait till, you know, I'm just, are we gonna be able to capture this at the right time?
Or can they be warned, you know, in other words, okay, you're opening, but just know, the real address is going. the real address is going to be such and such. So I hate to see them print up, have material that's cost with advertising and everything else and have the wrong address.
I talked to Mike Hagan, who is rapidly trying to get all those suites filled. So I think we can do it all at one time and just, you know, agonize one time with the group and be done with it. So that's the plan.
All righty, anything else? Wasn't that fun? Didn't know what that was gonna turn into, but we all got that email, so we knew that was a hot topic. So nothing else for Whitney? Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
No, but this.
Well, you know what, we can.
Not a consent item because it has, it's an alcohol thing.
Well, that's what I was just glancing at, my old notes to look for public hearing, and there's no public hearing listed there. It should say a public hearing. Okay, good, good. I'll just write it in on here, and we'll have a new one by this evening. Because I marked all my public hearings in bright yellow. Okay, Whitney, you're not done. Number three, I'm looking at two different agendas. I'm trying to make sure they match up. ABL-04-24 Arondas, Arondas Inc., Inc., doing business as Los Cowboys Mexican Restaurant.
Yes, this will be an application to essentially amend the restaurant pouring license that they have in place, as well as a, a transfer of, of the licensee. Again, as stated before, they will be entering into license agreements with Main Street to provide the beer, wine, and potentially alcohol for upcoming events being hosted at the Mill Amphitheater, and they want to, or will have to amend their license to include a designation of a catering license. So we are presenting the application for that, as well as it was discovered that the licensee needed to be amended to Ms. Maria G. Melendez. So we are also amending the licensee on that, being that they are not changing locations or anything like that. I have a current pouring license there. It's to my understanding that they do not, and, and the current licensee is deceased. It's to my understanding that they do not have to have a public hearing. They did not have to notice for any type of public hearing for that.
That was gonna be my question, because I don't see a public hearing listed here, the licensee needed to change.
Correct.
Okay, something had gotten missed some years ago, it looks like. Any questions for Whitney? No public hearing? We can do this as a consent.
Not really, because it has to be unanimous, and it's not unanimous on alcohol.
Okay, we'll be back and revisit this tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Trying to remember that. Okay. All right, item four, VA-04-24 and VA-06-24 Buffer Variants for the new development, Baker Industrial Development at Baker Industrial Court. I wanted to go over and see this too, but I felt like if I didn't go with somebody that knew where everything was gonna sit, that I'd waste my time going over there to look at it. Because my main concern, I'll let you give your presentation, is I wanted to make sure I, we're talking about buffers, and I know there's residential over there, so that was kind of my big concern. But anyway, good afternoon. Go right ahead, Sean.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So today, we actually have a, two variances, separate variances. They're both dealing with buffers. The first one is dealing with deviation from the seventy-five-foot city required buffer for new industrial development inside the I-1 zone, abutting a agricultural lot, existing lot. And the second variance is dealing with waiving a seventy-five-foot impervious buffer and encroaching a little bit on a fifty-foot city-regulated stream buffer. Now, just to give a little bit of backdrop about the location of it, it's actually inside the I-20 Gateway East Character Area. It is zoned, again, I-1, and pertaining to the, the first variance is actually dealing with, it's actually surrounded by agricultural zone. That's actually surrounded by the west of that parcel, also the north and the south of that parcel. Now, towards the east of that proposed applicant's parcel, it's actually zoned same use I-1, as well as to the southeast of that parcel, it's actually zoned, it's actually out of our city limits, and that's zoned agricultural, but inside the Carroll County city area limits. To the north of that parcel is actually a fifty-foot or a gas pipeline, and that actually has to have a fifty-foot easement right there, so no property can encroach that fifty-foot easement for the, for the gas pipeline.
Right, that can't be touched no matter what.
Yes, ma'am, no matter what. There is a unnamed creek that's actually right, actually travels from the north of that parcel, and it goes right in the middle of it, and then it starts deviating a little bit to the west area of that parcel, which is, hence why the second of those variances deal with a stream variance buffer variance. And there, just like the mayor said, there's actually some residential use that's actually towards the southwest of that parcel. I think it's some odd eight to seven currently occupied residential, single-family use lots, but they are inside the agricultural zone there. The proposed development is actually shown on the screen right there. The applicant is actually proposing to do a warehouse. It is a four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-square-foot warehouse. As you can see, a little bit, it's actually situated towards the northwest part of that lot, and then those, excuse me for my language, but it's actually like wiggly type of, of lines that's actually on that site plan, and that's dealing with a, a stream that's actually going right there. It's actually coming from the north, goes down into the middle part of that parcel, and then starts deviating again to the west of that. And this proposed development, they're actually trying to have a one-hundred-and-eighty-foot, foot truck court or a fifty-foot stall, like truck stalls, or, excuse me, fifty-four truck stall spaces. That's going to be to the south of that proposed building, and then also towards the west and the north of that proposed building, it will be two-hundred-and-sixty-six vehicle parking spaces. The applicant did stress that they don't have any tenants right now for that proposed warehouse, but they are interested in seeing if they can get one to two tenants to actually go inside that, that proposed warehouse. And the first variance is dealing with a reduction of the seventy-five-foot buffer along the property line of the, the lot. The city actually has a regulation of a seventy-foot buffer. It has to be a width, it can either be a, a vegetative-type buffer, or it can be a, a fence. It'll be a, a foot opaque fence that'll actually be in between that, but has to be, the A-foot fence has to be abutting the existing agricultural lot, and then have a seventy-five-foot vegetative buffer after that onto the lot. That makes sense. Excuse me. And the first variance is actually for a proposed ten-foot vegetative buffer, deviating from the seventy-five-foot buffer, and then the second variance is pertaining to them actually encroaching the, the fifty-foot city-regulated stream buffer, and then also see if they can wave the seventy-foot impervious buffer that the city has. And the pervious buffer is for no developer can actually grade or do any type of construction within that pervious buffer. And for the first variance, the city have actually looked at what the developer was actually proposing, and staff recommendation for the first variance in dealing with a reduction of the seventy-five-foot buffer in place of a ten-foot planted setback buffer along the north and the south property lines. City recommends denial for that, only because that seventy-five buffer serves to protect and mitigate potential negative impacts such as noise pollution and visual intrusion of the two different zones.
Land uses or, okay, so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. And then the last of the two variances is dealing with a, a waving of the seventy-five-foot impervious buffer, and then they're going to encroach the fifty-foot buffer, and city staff has actually set a recommendation to deny that one as well, only because the detriments do not outweigh the, the benefits. We don't know what that, what that tenant or those two tenants are actually are. They could be some type of industrial use that could potentially harm our, our streams that are actually on that lot, even though it is an unnamed stream, and it can, it's potentially self-imposed in nature where they can place that building on that lot.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, I was waiting. Are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Councilman Montahan, we will have a hearing tonight, so it's really up to y'all how much you wanna discuss now, and I, it doesn't matter to me either way. So whatever you wanna do, because I probably have a few questions. We might need to clear something up before this evening, so I almost hate to throw all of it to this evening in case we need to get something cleared up. Danny, it's in your ward, so I'm looking to you for some input too. So, yes, Councilman Montahan, go ahead.
Sean, just so I can understand staff's position, it sounds to me like the staff's position is generally, they could just build a smaller building here, and then they would not need all these buffer, or these variances. Is that fair? I mean, in some?
Yes, sir, hence why it's self-imposed in nature.
I mean, I tend, I mean, just from information you've presented, I mean, not having a specific user yet, I would, you know, I would like to hear from the applicant this evening about why they built, they believe they would need to have a building of this size. You know, the fact that they've got this, the pipeline easement on there, I'm a little, I have questions about that, because I know we have other pipeline easements in the city, and I feel like they've permitted them to put parking areas and whatnot over them. I don't know about the specifics of this one, but, you know, if that's a, if that, if they cannot legitimately do anything on that pipeline easement, I, I can see giving them a little bit, but, you know, again, not knowing the end user on this, then I'm kind of a little bit less forgiving in some, in some views. I would like to hear that this evening from them, but those are just my thoughts.
Yes, because I saw you nodding while he was asking that question, Mr. Barber.
So when we, when we met with the applicant the first time and told him that we were not gonna support this at the staff level, what we said to him was, if you come back and bring us users so that we can make a decision in the context of who is gonna be in this building, you, you have a possibility that staff might support this. But it's sort of chicken and the egg.
Right.
And he's basically a spec builder.
Right.
And so we, we gave him a choice of either trying to find a user, even though he doesn't have the property under contract, which he's not comfortable with, or going through this process where he's getting a recommendation of denial. So he sort of stuck.
I mean, yeah, if he had a specific user in mind, then that user can come up here and say, well, I need a building of such footprint to do my project, and, but here, I mean, like you said, it sounds like he's just trying to get something approved, and then he can go and market it speculatively, so that's a concern, but.
Did, did he ever come up with maybe the idea to shrink the building down and not encroach upon the streams?
It's, it's a, sort of a long, narrow space, and the more you shrink that narrow side, the more unused, the closer to an unusable site you get. Because at some point, you make the building so thin, no matter how long it is, it's just not practical. And that's, that's where he's headed now, is if, when you look at that space and that building profile, it's, it's a long, narrow, I mean, look at that. It's a long, narrow building, and if we were to not give him those variances, then it would, it would be so narrow vertically on that drawing that it, it wouldn't be worth building.
See, that's the nuance we need from your department, because we're used to planning and zoning, and, and it's not your fault. We're used to planning and zoning, just saying, no, 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 no. We need to hear, is that a solid no, or is there a real reason that there truly is hardship here? Because nobody's gonna do anything if they can't make money, and in this case, we have, you know, the stream, we have the gas line. Were you also nodding when we were discussing the gas line, that maybe that isn't set in stone, what's required on that easement? Because when you were talking about paving over it, you're nodding, yes, that's happened. So what's the, what's the bottom line with the gas line?
Yeah, I mean, we've seen that, like out at Popeyes and the proposed IHOP with them.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
We've also had a, this gas line has sprung a leak. They had to repair it several years back. It sprung a leak over behind the power station. They went down there and did a repair on this gas line. So I don't think it's a good idea to be anywhere near covering this one over.
They're not gonna let them build an industrial building or, or even a truck parking lot, I don't think, on top of that, but you remember when we were talking to Fuqua about the way that we were requiring setbacks between the out parcels, where our ordinance didn't really envision a shopping center, so we were requiring each out parcel to have full setbacks on each side, front, back, and sides. And then when you, when you had another out parcel beside it, you wound up with a double setback, right? Instead of, instead of two twenty-fives, I think we reduced it to two tens or something. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So we've made an accommodation like that. So you, you may wanna entertain the variance on the top and reduce it, which is what Mr. Montahan was saying a minute ago. Maybe we wanna, maybe not give them that entire variance, but part of it on the, on the gas line side, because you've got a full variant, you've got a full setback from the gas line. So really, you've got two, you've got two setbacks. You've got a gas line setback and then ours, then our setback.
Okay.
And they wanna shrink this one. They can't do anything to this one, right? And then, and then when you, anytime we talk about these streams, you know, you've got a twenty-five-foot state, a twenty-five-foot city, and a twenty-five-foot city, and what they're asking for is to be able to build or park, I guess, park in the, in the outside twenty-five, and then get a little bit in the middle twenty-five with parking.
With parking.
Yeah, they're asking for ten feet.
Where is it on there? Because it's not colored. Where is the intrusion into the seventy-five feet? All on the east side?
No, it should be on the south right there.
That's why we need one of those pointers that doesn't reflect. We haven't found that yet.
Sean, one of the things that we've done is required the applicant to color the intrusion in the twenty-five-foot variances on the stream, so, just so that we can see it.
Right. I, I did tell the applicant that. He did some type of shading. He said that, that the coloring would be too messy for it.
No, it's, it helps me to see it.
I actually do have a PowerPoint with it as well. I guess we have technical difficulties, and actually, um, Maggie.
Is this building just a storage building, or is it one of those transfer buildings you bring stuff in on one side and take it out on the other?
It's gonna be, it's, it could easily become a distribution building.
Yeah.
I think that's his intent. Is that sort of what it sounds like?
Um, yeah, you said a warehouse slash distribution.
Yeah. So you're gonna have, you know, truck, traffic on Baker and truck, traffic on Liberty, which is, which is okay.
We've got quite a bit of industrial over there, do we not?
That area is industrial. That area is industrial.
That's pretty much what's, except, yeah, except that what's behind it. And my main concern with the buffers, as long as the streams are protected, I don't have, and if we have a double on top of double on something, I think that has to do with the gas line. As long as we're not messing with what EPD requires, which we can't, I don't believe. I don't have a real problem, I don't think, with them maybe going ten feet into that fifty foot. But I was also concerned, those residents, is that off of, is that South Wilson? Who, is that where that is?
This is Maple Valley.
I thought that's what that looked like when I was looking through. I just wanted to make sure for them, they're out really what is very rural in a lot of ways back where they are very quiet, that they had enough of a buffer between them, because we don't even know what's going to go on there yet. This is a speculative building. I wanted to make sure they were protected. So it'll be good to hear from the applicant tonight. Yes, Councilman Montahan.
Whenever um.
Uh, is Baker industrial the second?
Like disappeared?
Hopefully this will have a better rendition of the site plan. Uh, it should be the fourth slide.
Okay, oh, okay, yeah, that's good, okay. That's the detail of the stream buffer variance?
Yes, sir, the second one, second variance.
Okay, so I guess, I guess to Tom's point, because they got this up here, they would, they had this because they have the pipeline easement, right? Theoretically, if that wasn't there, they could have scooted this up and they wouldn't need this.
I mean, do you agree with that? Is that, so I guess I kind of see the pipeline causing kind of being the cause of the, of two of the variances or one and a half of the variances, but um, but that side one with the, the ten-foot on the ag, I don't, I'm not really, I think that to me is the question of, well, they could just make a slightly smaller building there. Like, I could see the, kind of the north-south one, but the east-west variance, I don't, I don't, I don't see it.
That's where they just want to do the uh ten-foot vegetation, right?
Up against the ag, yes, ma'am.
What's on that side of them?
Um, it's all agricultural towards the west of it. It's um a giant lot, it's undeveloped.
That's what I need to know, okay. But it's zoned agricultural.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the reason we require more is because one's agricultural and one's not.
Correct.
And we don't know what's going to be there, it's undeveloped now. It could turn into industrial, but it could very well be agricultural. So we still need to protect it, it seems to me, until, until it isn't agricultural. That makes sense that, and, and maybe they can demonstrate some sort of hardship that will make sense to us, but that'll be tonight, so.
Okay.
Anybody else on this? Well, so uh, Tom, Mr. Barber, you help us tonight on walking through this, just like when you're explaining the narrowness of the building. We need all the input we can get so we can try to make the best decision we can on this. Okay, Sean, uh five VA dash oh five dash two four and VA dash oh seven dash two four variance. Variance is for Chick-fil-A to operate temporary food truck. It's not really a truck.
Mobile vendor, food vendor.
Mobile vendor, it's fitting, and this may be the tough part. It's being looked at under the truck ordinance because it's a mobile setup, so this is going to be fun and it's Chick-fil-A, so.
Yes, yes.
And people love themselves some Chick-fil-A around here, so go ahead.
So um Chick-fil-A, they're actually have already closed for a remodel. They're going, supposed to be closed for approximately three and a half to four months.
Villa Rica, Villa Rica, correct?
Villa Ricas, yes.
It is that.
Yes.
It's our place.
But this is, but this is the Bremen owner operator.
Okay.
Coming in.
Yes, yes.
Because we were confused, so go ahead.
Okay, um, I do apologize for that, but um they're actually going to have two variances. Uh, they're both pertaining to uh food trucks and mobile vendors operating. Uh, they kind of uh contradict each other, but the first variance is pertaining to the zoning ordinance and that is for a food vendor to operate more than four consecutive days in, in any one location unless um having approval uh by you all. And the latter of the two uh variances is pertaining to no food truck shall operate on any other day itself of Mondays. And that's inside the um, the business, the licensed business regulations. So two different um ordinances books and they kind of contradict each other.
Yeah, I can see that.
Now, a little bit of background that's going to go on with this, um, again, Chick-fil-A, the Villa Rica Chick-fil-A is actually have already closed again for uh three and a half to four months. And uh they're trying to see if they can't file a couple variances to see if they can't operate temporary um food. Um, their, this particular temporary lot is around three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy feet away from their um already existing uh parcel. Um, their parcel, their um existing parcel is actually zoned C two, which is um a little different from the temporary lot, which is uh zoned, a dual zoning. It's actually one zone in the front, one, uh, one-third of it is C one. And then the back of it, two-thirds of it is actually um I one, believe it or not.
Where the trailers are?
Where the trailers are.
I one? That's odd, okay, okay. We kind of wish they'll just all disappear anyway, but that's, that's another topic. I was hoping the mobile unit would just block what's behind. I've been driving past there thinking about calling codes and seeing if we could do anything.
Yes, there's actually a lot going on with construction and then um a multitude of vacant buildings that's actually on that lot. Um, that lot right now, the temporary lot, is actually fourteen point five eight acres. Um, is owned by the Leathers family and um um Villa Rica, or excuse me, uh, the Bremen Chick-fil-A is actually going to be um, I guess, preparing food, preparing limited items at their store, which is around fifteen minutes away. And uh they will be putting all the limited items on a truck or van and then driving to the temporary site. Um, the temporary site is um, it'll actually have a tent that's actually will go on, on there. And then that, that tent will actually have dual parking leading up onto that site or uh onto the um, the tent. And the tent will be, um, it'll have, I believe, two or three employees right there that will actually uh conduct orders and then uh serve food. There will be a, a mobile truck, like a uh, a licensed uh food truck that'll be on site, would be twenty feet behind that tent, but uh there'll be no food or beverages that'll be served on there, it'll just be for supplies. The applicant and he can allude a little bit more when they actually uh come here tonight. They are actually proposing to have a entrance that's actually going in to the uh, to the uh, uh temporary site. And then again, they'll have the, the dual um drive-through that'll actually be there. Here it is, here's a site plan right here. See, right there, uh, at the bottom right, it was, it says B, that's where it'll be a entrance-only type of um, um, I guess, roadway, and then it'll lead up to that tent area. And then also, uh, at the bottom, it has A, that's right there. And those two are actually dedicated for um exits for both those dual drive-throughs. Um, those exits are actually will only be right-only exits. The cars will not be allowed to actually make lefts, which will help a little bit alleviate traffic. And um, the applicant did express that they will have signs that'll actually be there and they could have potentially have employees that'll be there, um, help direct traffic. Again, that lot, as you see, it says existing buildings. All those buildings right there are vacant buildings. Those used to be um, uh, a couple of them used to be Ruby's Diner. Um, another one used to be um a, a auto, auto shop, auto repair shop right there. Uh, again, they both hence have, are, are vacant. And um, like you said, uh, earlier, there are, I believe, eight to seven um trailers, mobile trailers are actually on that lot. The owner did say that he actually evacuated everyone from those trailers this year because they were actually trying to uh have a, a proposed um developer actually buy that lot. But that since fell through, so they're still trying to find somebody to find those lots or to uh buy that lot. And he said, once he does buy or find somebody to buy that lot, they'll get to the process of uh demolishing those structures that's actually on there that are not being used.
Okay, so that's why they partially tore down Ruby's Diner and then stopped.
Um, they actually started doing that earlier this year, but they didn't have um the right permitting, so they actually got shut down by codes.
Okay.
I thought they were replacing the roof on that thing. I didn't know they were kind of.
Yeah, Councilman Carter.
Um, Sean?
Yes, sir.
How many vehicles can exit and get in line with off of seventy-eight before you impact seventy-eight?
Yes, that's actually a, a topic of discussion. Um, it is a estimated one hundred and seventy-five feet and I actually did go out there and measure a little bit of it. It's around uh one, one-seventy feet from um the entrance of that, that one area and it goes up to the tents. And um, the applicant said that he might can get twelve uh cars on there. Now, I kind of disagree. I'll say at maybe eight cars can actually be there. Uh, and when I say eight cars, I mean, uh, since it's dual uh drive-through, then it'll be eight cars for the bottom and eight cars to the, to the top.
Okay, where does the dual start?
It actually starts.
Right after you make the turn?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Or it, it starts like um right where it says tent right there. That's, so right when you make the turn, that'll be where um those two dual parkings were actually.
So there's not too much dual going on? Most of it's singular?
Most of it will be singular in um, in reality, yes, sir. I think that the uh dual parking, especially.
My biggest complaint would be if it impacts the traffic on Highway seventy-eight, we got a problem.
Yes, sir. Well, yes, sir, which is one of the uh problems that staff actually uh brung up, where we already have construction on uh seventy-eight right now, especially with the new fire department that's right across the street. And we have new developments, we have a uh new road right there for one of the uh new residential developments that are actually uh going to be behind there, uh Starlight. So um, it's, it's quite a bit of traffic going on as well as the uh amount of traffic that's already there on our normal day. So um, there is a little bit of um safety concerns right there on Highway sixty-one.
Yeah, that's pretty close to where the school lets out too, so it's.
Or seventy-eight, excuse me.
It's going to be a mess.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I know we're going to have a public hearing, it'll be good to have the applicant to kind of give their side of the story and, you know, but I'm, I'm going to be looking at you when I say this and I want you to catch me right away if anything I say is inaccurate because this is how I'm seeing what's happening here and I want to make sure we're clear because I think we've had some confusion. Our Chick-fil-A right now is being um expanded. It's expanded, it is closed, it cannot op, it's not operating. Now, there's two different owners. Bremen is not owned by the same, the franchise is not owned by the same, so uh in Villa Rica. So are they assisting the Villa Rica owner in being able to sell some items? And that's where I think the traffic might be a little different. They're going to have a limited menu. You're not going to be driving in there and getting some of the things you usually go for. So that, that will make a difference in the traffic, but people do love Chick-fil-A. So, and, okay, so they're going to assist them, they're going to bring it over, they'll have it in those warmer things or whatever they do. Now, you said something about only exiting to the left. It would actually be the right, correct? Because it's on the Ruby side, they're coming out, they can only go to the right.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay, I thought you said left, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, I think that's all. And the only other thing is the food truck ordinance was written for a whole different thing. It's another one of those things like the shopping centers, both Fuquay and what might go over here near Dunkin' Donuts on Jeff Mathews' property. We're trying to apply something to a whole different situation. This one, where's the food truck on the thing o- operating on only Monday? I think we took that out or meant to take that out. That was supposed to be gone. That's, that's an old thing that was basically not to compete with restaurants downtown. And we realized that wasn't really realistic. The people going to a food truck aren't looking to go to sit down and eat at a restaurant. You're like dealing with two different people. And we would no more discourage more restaurants from being downtown because there'd be competition. We want more because it brings more people. So are you running into some problems on this by trying to apply an ordinance that was written for a truck that goes in and parks downtown? And that's where the four-day, they can't operate for more than a certain number of days. Are we trying to apply that in this situation? Because it doesn't even apply.
Mayor, the, what they're trying to do does not fit our ordinances at all. We, we looked at several different ways that we could approve this on a staff level and it just doesn't.
Okay.
We just didn't contemplate this type of business happening, so, or our ordinances do not.
Well, that's perfect. Not that it's a perfect situation, but it helps us understand that we can't sit there and try to apply this ordinance. That we're going to have to work our way and our problem's going to be, we don't want traffic backing up on seventy-eight and we'll be looking for some assurance, or if it happens, what's the plan B? Because it can't be backed out on the highway.
And you may want to look at, if you approve it, approve it for a period of time till the next council meeting or to see what's hap, see how it happens over a period of time.
Or some sort of condition.
Right.
You know, that there cannot be cars sitting out on seventy-eight. And I haven't been over there to visually look at to see where else they can go otherwise, okay, but any, uh, yes, Mr. Barber.
If this wasn't Chick-fil-A and there wasn't a renovation involved, would you even consider this?
No.
For another restaurant?
Well, I'm sorry, I spoke too quick. I think we're doing it because it's one of our existing businesses that's still trying to make a little bit of money while they're totally shut down and that, we wouldn't have just somebody come in and open us.
Is this Jason?
Justin, no. It's not, I mean, I spoke to Justin, it's not him, but some of his employees will be working here to assist.
That's a reason to consider it to me.
Um, and, and I talked to Justin and it sounds like he, it's got his blessing and they're cooperating with each other and so forth.
Well, and, I'm sorry, were you?
No, go right ahead.
To your point, the question was if, if this wasn't Chick-fil-A, will we be considering this? Well, with doing renovations, you know, they're, they're trying to um make exceptions to keep their business going. And if it wasn't Chick-fil-A, if it was anybody else, would they be as busy as Chick-fil-A? And I think that that's kind of one of the issues right now or one of the concerns is the amount of traffic that it's going to generate in that area. But look, if we're going to deny this, um, we got to have a real good reason for people to not be able to get uh the Lord's Chicken on for four months.
Riots.
Yeah. The Lord's Chicken, you've never heard it called that, yep. Um, so yeah, it, I think that with Chick-fil-A, they're just much busier than any other restaurant would be. Um, but they are very efficient in getting those people in and out. We've got, we got to give them that.
Yeah, to that point, I mean, it is Chick-fil-A and we know, it doesn't matter what Chick-fil-A, whether it's the Villa Rica one or Carrollton one or across the world, they, they just have a reputation for doing efficient, clean, operationally sound, you know. And so if it can be done, this is probably the organization that can pull it off.
Yeah, they know, they know how to move people, but I'd also say this, not just Chick-fil-A, but if we had any business in town that needed to operate a little differently for a short period of time to help them stay viable or still earn money, I think we'd be looking at making some exceptions for them, whoever it is.
Yeah, and we did that during COVID with.
We happen to joke a little bit more about Chick-fil-A because of their reputation, but they do know how to move cars. I mean, they need to be working a lot of other places.
And I do believe that, he has, our city attorney has a, a point. We should probably make a contingent upon review on a monthly basis until we're sure this thing's going to work out. Because we don't want to impact the flow of traffic on seventy-eight where the schools coming out. There's work going on in two or three different um projects going on. It's going to be a mess if we, if we're not careful.
What would, what would be the best way to make that condition? Uh, do we have to revisit it right in a month or that they understand that it can't continue just right up front, that there's a condition that the cars cannot be backed up on seventy-eight?
I would say we just re- review it in forty-five days. That gives them basically our next council meeting and then at our next council meeting, we can say, we're not going to, we have no intention of renewing your permit in two to fourteen days or whatever, something like that. That, that's why I would envision that. The other thing I would say as far as a condition is I would reiterate to them as a condition that there's no onsite food preparation. I mean, this is supposed to be a grab-and-go situation and that's all we're permitting.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's what they have here in the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can talk further tonight too, yes, sir?
Um, yes, there are, uh, I just want to point out that their or, their uh operation hours are actually from seven AM to eight P. I just want to point out that their operation hours are actually from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So that's 7:00 a.m.
We could limit that, too.
Is the 8:00 p.m. like an hour difference from when they normally close? Because they're not a late...
I think they stay open till 10:00, and they're open much earlier, like 5:00 or 6:00 a.m.
I'm guessing probably lighting and the fact that they're working the way they are, it's not gonna work to have the same hours.
Well, and when we're mentioning the school as well, I just want to point out that their busy time, when that line is wrapped around the building and out to the street, is typically at lunchtime. And so when school lets out, it's not typically one of those where it's a long line at that point. So as far as school traffic goes and causing an issue with a line, I don't foresee that being an issue just because of the time of lunch, the lunch crowd, and then when school gets out.
And if they open it?
They don't typically have a line. I mean, from what I've seen as far as the line in the morning, they're not, they're not typ... From what I've seen, they're not typically a long line at that point either.
I'm sure they can speak to that this evening.
Right.
They'll know. They'll know what they typically have. And the fact is, depending on that limited menu, which they can also explain, they're not gonna get all the people if they're... If people can't get all the things they're used to getting.
Oh, yes, they will. It's the Lord's Chicken.
Or they'll just switch. I assume milkshakes are not sitting in a warmer or a cooler.
There'd be no milkshakes.
You're not gonna be in getting your frosted lemonade or whatever. Okay. All right, well, anything else from the council? Because we can hear the applicant tonight. I think we've spent more than enough time, but it's different. This is not normal, so... And there was some confusion, so I appreciate it. Thank you for all the input. And let's get those ordinances straightened out. We need to fix those and get... So they're not contradictory. All right, Sean, CU-0424 and CU-05-24, special exception use request to allow four semi-trailer lanes on lot and allow vape shop, those are one of our faves, in C2 zone.
Yes, so we have applicant. He's requesting two special exception uses. That is for the 701 Edge Road parcel. The, like the mayor said, the first one is pertaining to him actually having four existing... They were already existing to his knowledge. He said that when he first bought the parcel in 2018, that those were already there. He just said that trucks actually come off of I-20 and starts parking there, so he decided to see if he couldn't get a sign and start paying or offering to have truck drivers be there and pay him a small fee to stay there. Now, there is some problems pertaining to that one area. I mean, they're all, essentially, there are three, there are four lanes, but there are three white lines there. They're all different lengths. There's one that's 93 feet, there's one that's, or 98 feet, there's one that's 88 feet, and there's one that's 74 feet. And then that closest lane, that's actually towards the, that's towards the exit, I guess entrance and exit, there is, I would say, a 77 to an 80-foot maneuvering space that's actually from that start of that lane to the canopy for the filler station. So it's a very tight maneuvering space for trucks to actually be backing up there. Now, the applicant, he did actually start, like I said earlier, charging these trucks that are already there, but in January of 2022, code enforcement actually came by, saw that, saw he had a sign out there, and he actually got a violation letter for unauthorized parking and signage on that lot. Now, it is a C2 lot, and it is, truck lanes are permitted on that lot, but he had to get a special exception because it's actually, the first use is a convenience store and filler station that's actually right there. The second of the two variances is a vape shop. It's actually zone C2, and as you all know, for a C2 zone, for a vape shop to actually be operated within that zone, they have to get a city council's approval for that. There are, there were some restaurants that were there, like earlier, as early as last year, but the applicant had to go through some legal action to actually have them removed, hence why it's vacant till this day. So the applicant decided to go ahead and make that a vape shop. It does have permitted parking there, has more than enough parking based off our city ordinances. It's, and it's not anywhere near any health-sensitive groups like hospitals, or parks, or schools or anything, and it's not within that 500-foot radius that deals with any same-use shops that are actually in that area as well. So for the first variance, city staff actually recommends denial for those four semi-truck parking lanes that's actually on that lot, only because the maneuvering is so tight there that it could be some disruption for the incoming and exiting vehicles that are actually on that parcel, as well as, as well as it's, the request itself is economic and, it's economic gain request as well, and it can disrupt traffic that's already on that Edge Road, Liberty Boulevard-type of areas right there.
I wish I'd thought about this ahead of time, because I actually have a few truckers. I had a few that lived in my ward that a lot of times I'd run some of this by because they have some experience with doing this. One of the reasons you gave in the report had to do with truck traffic. I don't think that's an issue if we're talking about three to four lanes.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Now, the tightness, you're saying because it's tight for maneuvering, who decided it was tight for maneuvering?
I went out there, I did a measurement out there. From that one line that is closest to the, that exit area, that the line that's on the right, is actually 77 to 80 feet to that, the start of that filler station, filler station apron. The standard truck and trailer, the length of that is about 70 feet. So that's, it just gives like a, maybe a eight to 10-foot buffer.
So when they're coming in and getting in there, it would block that entrance-exit over on the right?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, the filling station, they've got the filling station, what else do they have in there? I'm like, never there. Are you familiar with that, Danny? I know it's in your ward.
They actually just opened up a, I believe it's a taqueria that's actually inside the convenience store area. So it's not, has nothing to do with that Sweet Bee that they proposed vape shop is actually gonna be at, but they do have another restaurant that's actually within that.
Are trucks parking anywhere else on that property?
Not to my knowledge. Most of the volume is right there, what you see.
I know it took me a little bit to figure it out, because when I think of Edge Road, I never even think of that side. Plus, it was listed as Mirror Lake Boulevard, and we always think of that as Liberty on that side, south of 20. So it took me a minute to figure out what we were talking about. Okay, questions from the council?
Yeah, there's two gateways to Inverica, Exit 24 and Exit 26. Now, at the last meeting, we turned down two vape stores because we didn't want to be at the gateway to Inverica. This is also a vape shop wanting to open up on the gateway to Inverica. Why would we want to allow one at Exit 26 if we don't want any more at Exit 24?
Yes, sir. This one is actually in a more industrial-type of area versus the one that's actually on Exit 24. It's actually in a more commercial-use type of area. Now, the only reason that city staff actually approved this is because, based off our city ordinance, it does meet all of our requirements to be in this lot. They just have to get approval from you all.
So, but I read in here that the closest vape shop is, what, .6 miles? So you've got one right around the corner from it?
Yes, it just doesn't fit that 300-feet requirement that we have inside our city ordinance currently.
Yeah, the ordinance allows it so much closer.
But see, this is where the concern is, is that we're gonna become like capital of vape shops. I mean, half a mile, you're, it's right there. I think we really need to revisit our ordinance.
No, we do, and I, it was probably later this morning that I did send a email to Mr. Mecklen and asked some questions, because Carrollton just made a move, having to do with vape shops, and I had heard about that. And I even went ahead and texted with one of their council people this morning to get a little of information on what they did. So I'm getting a consensus from what we've talked about since the last meeting, that we definitely want to look at that ordinance. And what can we do in the meantime, without saying too much here right now, but it is in an email to Attorney Mecklen, what my question was about what the legalities were about us making certain moves, and then deciding how we wanted to move forward. And I may have gotten an answer, didn't have time to look at it before I left, because I was doing all that this morning. Okay, so the vape shop, the reason you're recommending approval is because it fits, at this time, it fits our ordinances. It fits, what is it, C1? It can go in anywhere from industrial to...
Yes, C2.
C1, C2? Okay. Okay, so, not that we can't make a decision on that, but we can't change the ordinance at this time. So I guess, is any other questions? Because I know, is the applicant planning to be here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. Good, so we can ask the other additional questions tonight. Anything else from council?
The only other kind of concern I have, and it's kind of a procedural matter, I mean, this is, you know, whereas items B4 and B5 are kind of similar, they're dealing with the same parcel property, item B6 is kind of two different type, style, or types of requests, and I was, and I thought maybe Attorney Drummond or Attorney Mecklen could opine that if we, if one public hearing is sufficient for both of these kind of things, or if we need to actually have two this evening. I just wanted to bring that to your attention before we got too far along this evening.
I think what you brought up makes sense to have in this application, because the two variances really aren't related.
Mm-mm.
Your mind thinks... All right, sorry. I think what you brought up makes sense, since this application, the two variances really are not related. The earlier buffer, where they were asking for two different variances, those are definitely related.
Right.
So these are not, so it makes sense to me to have two separate hearings.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We'll put that on the agenda for tonight. I think we're letting you off, Sean.
Thank you, counsel.
For now.
For now.
Only for now. Okay, we're gonna move to Main Street, C1, appointment of Main Street Advisory Board member, and we have three of these, three and then two Downtown Development.
Yes, good afternoon, mayor and council. That's the first three items, as the mayor said. We've got appointments to, for your consideration, to the Main Street Advisory Board. Currently, we have four members and three vacancies. So the first one is, of course, this is appointment to the board. We advertised, staff advertised, and received application from individuals, and it's these three applications that I've received. The board did interview the applicants at the March 15 regular monthly meeting and has recommended the appointment. The first one is Nora Holliday. She moved to Inverica nine years ago. She tends to the downtown events regularly. She does have a master's degree in project management and would like to contribute her education to help improve the downtown area. So staff is recommending the appointment of Nora Holliday to the Main Street Advisory Board and fill the unexpired term of Landon Prather. Landon resigned recently due to his work schedule. Term will be 4/9/2024 through 12/31/2025.
Any questions from council? Is it, you have anything else on this one? Because if we go by one, everyone okay with making this consent? Item number two? All right, all right, go ahead, Alisa.
Okay, the next appointment, this is Joel Crawford. He submitted his application. He lives in the downtown area and owns his own business, Missing Digit Design LLC, and works from his home. He would like to serve in the community and be a member of the board and get that opportunity as well. He says he does have the time to volunteer. So staff has recommended the appointment of Joel Crawford to the Main Street Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Bradford Heagler. Term will be 4/9/2024 to 12/31/2024.
Any questions from council? Everyone all right with making this consent? Agenda, item number three?
Okay, our next applicant is Susan Thompson Crane. She has retired and lives in Inverica. She's very active with the city. She's a member of the Friends of the Library, active at the senior center, plays pickleball. She regularly attends our downtown events, and would like to be more involved with our downtown area. So staff is recommending the appointment of Susan Thompson Crane to the Main Street Advisory Board for a term of 4/9/2024 through 12/31/2025.
Any questions? Anybody opposed to consent item number four? All right, we'll make that four. Alisa, go ahead.
Ready for the next? Okay, the next two items is appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board, and I just want to review with you what the state law is on the board structure. It is seven voting members. Four must have a business interest in the district, live in the city or in the county. One may be a councilman or mayor. One may have a business interest and live outside the county or city residence unless one of the above. So that is a state law, state-mandated authority. Okay, so we've got five members currently on the DDA board with two vacancies. This appointment, I did advertise, and we received six applications. The DDA board interviewed four of the applicants at two different meetings and recommends two of the appointments. One applicant was a no-show for the interview, and another applicant withdrew their application. This first one is Brandon Swafford. He's a Realtor with Flat Rock Realty, lives in the downtown area, right across the street from Jones' Funeral Home. He grew up in Inverica and would like to serve on the board to assist in revitalizations efforts in downtown. Staff recommend the appointment of Brandon Swafford to the Downtown Development Authority and fill the unexpired term of Rob Smith. Term will be 4/9/2024, 12/31/2026. And all four of those applications are in your packet, just like the Main Street Board.
Any questions from the council? Anyone opposed to this being consent item number five? Okay, Alisa.
Okay, and then the other applicant that the board recommends is Dr. Andre Westfield. He lives in Inverica and is retired from the State of Cobb Douglas Public Health, where he worked a number of years. He is, like I said, he is retired and says he's got plenty of time on his hands. He's interested in serving on the board and feels that this would be an opportunity to enhance the quality of life for the residents. And he, like I said, he's got the time to volunteer. So staff is recommending the appointment of Dr. Andre Westfield to the Downtown Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Michael Young. Term will be 4/9/2024 to 12/31/2027.
I think you mentioned he'd been our PD chaplain at one time, wasn't he? Westfield?
I'm not sure.
All right. Anybody opposed to making this, well, questions? Anybody opposed to making this consent item number six? All right, good. Okay, license agreement with Los Cowboys Mexican Restaurant.
Yes, so this year, we plan on using Los Cowboys Mexican Restaurant. Yes. So this year, we plan on using Los Cowboys Mexican Restaurant to provide the beer, wine, and alcohol sales at the five events that Villarica, Main Street will be hosting at the Mill Amphitheater. They're listed below. Our first one's coming up at the end of the month, the West Georgia Jazz Festival. That's April 27th, Summer Concert Number One, June the 1st. Number two is July 20th. Number three is August the 3rd, and the Gold Rush Festival Concert, which is on September the 20th. Just a little background, back in 2026 is when Main Street began partnering with local restaurants with a catering license to sell beer and wine at the, at the concerts. Villarica Main Street does profit 50% of all sales. And we haven't had any issues or cons, or concerns in the past with any of the alcohol-related events. So for 2024, staff would like to partner with Los Cowboys Mexican Restaurant for the sale of beer and wine and alcohol. Staff recommends the approval of the 2024 license agreements. We lost Cowboys Mexican Restaurant for the sale of beer and wine and alcohol at the five events at Villarica Main Street will be hosted as listed above.
Mr. Drummond, it's alcohol. Do we, can we make this a consent item? It's the agreement. We do this pretty much every year. It's just the vendor has changed at times for, can we make this a consent item?
You can.
We can. Okay. All right. Questions? Anyone appo, anyone opposed to making this a consent item? Move it to, can we? Okay. All right. So that'll be consent item number seven. Thank you, Alisa. D Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services. Hey, Tracy.
Oh, goodness. Shocked me. Good afternoon. I'm electric today. It shocked me. I have three items before you today. The first two I'll be handling, and they sort of work together. The first one is our selection of our July 3 fireworks vendor. We did an RFP, as we always do, and we had one successful respondent, and that would be Pyro Shows. So of course, this will be scheduled on Wednesday, July 3. It will be at the V Plex. And we're recommending that we select Pyro Shows again for our vendor for this year's July the 3 event. And it's, of course, you know, it's a regional event, so this is quite large in scope. So we're just looking forward, we're already in the planning stages now for that day. So getting ready for July 3.
We've used them before.
We've used them, we've used them several years. They merged two years, two or three years ago with another company, probably during COVID. And we've, we've used them the last three years, and we've been very, very pleased, very pleased with the service.
And they were the only one with a successful proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions from the counsel?
My only question, Tracy, I see that there's no rain date selected in the contract. So if there's a rain, does that mean?
We will not have a rain date.
Okay.
And that's, of course, that's all up for discussion for future. That's just the tendency that we've had. I know this will be my fourth one, and we've had no rain date each year.
Okay.
I didn't remember that. I knew we had done one in the past, but, you know, trying to remember all those details. Yes, Councilwoman Wormuth.
Sorry. If we don't have a rain date, then we'll pay for it regardless.
50%.
Okay, so it's 50% upfront, and then?
And then we just wouldn't pay the balance.
Okay.
And, you know, part of the issue with having a rain date is a lot of times municipalities or organizations will want to go to Labor Day. Well, they're already booked for Labor Day, so you might get a lesser quality show, and it just kind of does make sense not to have a rain date. So.
And, and let's just hope it works out.
Let you rebid it and.
Was last year the year that we had rain just prior?
We did. We had a little bit of rain.
And I'm telling you, it monsooned at my house. I didn't come. I, I thought the whole city was like that. And I couldn't believe it when we got over there. So I'm telling you right now, you'll think it's bad. You, I didn't show up for a long time because seriously, it was pouring. And I got over there, oh, well, we had a little rain, you know? And I, I thought it's probably going to have to be canceled or late start or something. I was so relieved. People were there and everything else. So it worked out fine.
We monitor, we monitor the weather with the, the weather, you know, group, the, the vendor, the next vendor that I'm recommending, they, you know, they're monitoring that. The fireworks folks are all monitoring. I mean, it's very, you know, it can rain up until, up until the show. And if there's no lightning and thunder, you can still have the show, but it could have just monsooned, you know, so.
The only thing we had that we couldn't control, and I've seen this happen before when I was out of town, the humidity, it was thick.
Right.
So near the end, the display wasn't quite as fantastic because the smoke would not disperse.
Right.
You know, but there's nothing you can do about that. It was still a good show, it was a good event, quality event, and people love it. They come from all around, so. Okey-dokey. All right. Any, any opposition to making this consent item number eight? All right, that'll be eight. July 3 Professional Services Contract with RCS Productions.
Yes, ma'am. This year, I combined the, all the services that we would need for stage lighting, sound, the entertainment. And the reason I said earlier that these two vendors closely work together is because we have a choreographed soundtrack to the fireworks show. So this, these groups work together. They'll start creating that, that CD and whatever we decide that we want to use for music that night. And then they will work with the fireworks vendor to make sure that it goes off without a hitch. In the last few years that we've done that, it's been, I think we were second off last year. So with all the rain and the forecast and all the uncertainty, I think it threw everybody in. But for one second, I'll buy it. Nobody knew but us. So, but we are recommending or requesting your approval to secure RCS Productions for our professional services that would be sound, lighting, staging, and also providing our entertainment for this year's event on July 3.
Questions from the counsel? Are you surprised?
A little bit.
We could give you a harder time. Wait a second, let me think up something.
Don't, don't think too long.
All right. Any opposition to making this consent item number nine? Right, hey, how was that?
I haven't seen some of y'all out there, so I'm looking forward to, looking forward to seeing you this year.
You can see it from my backyard.
I know you can. I know.
No traffic, huh?
Right.
Yeah, but you don't get the food and all the fun and watching the kids play around stuff. I'm telling you, just being there with everybody is just fun. Even if you stay late and watch the kids play while the traffic's dispersing, you get home late, but it's, it's worth it.
It's a long day for sure. So.
Especially for y'all.
Sir?
You got one more.
Yeah, I'm going to have my senior manager come up, our senior center manager come up and take care of that one. And Mayor, if you would, do the honors of reading the proclamation after she presents the item. We would appreciate that.
Now, would we do that now, or would we do that in the meeting tonight? I mean, y'all tell me. Now, do it now?
Yeah, I would do it tonight, too.
I mean, that's normally when we would do those type of things. But I don't care, you know?
Can you?
I definitely want.
I think we need to read it tonight because I don't want to consent.
Okay. Okay. Well, she may present it, and I'll be back tonight, then.
Now, does that mess y'all up? I don't want to mess up your schedule.
Somebody will be back tonight.
I don't want you to have to come back if you, I mean, I'm good with flexo. I don't want you to come back tonight just for this if you don't have to.
We'll, we'll work it out. She's going to read it anyway, okay? They won't know whether y'all are here or not. Okay. Well, that, I mean, that's fine, but.
No, don't come back.
I had one question on this item.
Why would you do that?
You would read that.
Tracy, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
When do you become an older American of the month?
I don't even want to talk about it because I'm already there.
I need to know. I really need to know.
I think it's 50, isn't it?
No, please don't do that.
It's 55, so we're in the same, you know.
Officially 55, huh?
Officially, yeah. So I could actually be a member of the senior center right now.
We'll, we'll move it and put it like the second thing on the agenda in the governing body.
Yeah, because I think that's one way we'd usually do it in the evening meeting when everybody's here. I'm not sure why we do older Americans Month, but I guess to recognize.
We'll let you know.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting old, but that's all.
I think we need to.
Look around.
Yeah, we need to change the age, though. 55, considering the life expectancy now, we need to go higher so that people that are 55 don't feel like they're seniors yet. Except for discounts. It comes in handy for discounts.
We could create a proclamation for.
Yes, ma'am.
How about we create a proclamation for ancient Americans?
Ancient Americans. I don't know. It depends on who you're asking on that one.
She wouldn't mind.
I want to thank y'all for your support for the senior center. And I'm going to give you a few ideas of the things that we have going on for the month of May. We have the Council on Aging Spring Fling in Carrollton. We have a Mother's Day Tea coming up. We also have a Senior Outdoor Fun and Fitness Day. This is sort of a senior field day. There's obstacle courses, relay races. It's open to anyone 55 and up, so y'all are welcome. Thank you qualify. We've invited Paulden County, Temple, Carrollton Senior Centers, and it's open to the community on that, as long as they're 55 and up. We provide lunch for them. The bands there, I mean, we have a lot, a lot of fun. So third, third annual this year. There is a prom, the Under the Sea Senior Prom that we're doing. Shrine Circus at Jim R. Miller Park in Marietta we're going to. The Area Agency on Aging Picnic at Tanner's Park. And then AARP Smart Driver Class. And anybody over the age of 14 is welcome to apply and go to that class. But we also have a day trip that we're planning, going to Rome to ride the riverboat up there. So a lot of different things for our seniors. But with all of this, the purpose of letting you know what all the seniors are doing, we are growing, more activities for them. Just because you get older, you don't quit living, is what I'm always telling them. I get a lot of people in there, 70s and 80s years old, and they're like, I don't know if I qualify yet. Yes, you do. So come on. But give you a little background. Established in 1963, Older Americans Month is celebrated every May, led by the Administration for Community Living. Older, Older Americans Month is a time for us to acknowledge the contributions and achievements of older Americans, highlight important trends and strengths, strengthens our commitment to honoring older citizens. In 2024, the theme is Powered by Connection, which recognizes the profound impact that meaningful relationships and social connections have on our health and well-being. The Villarica Parks and Recreation Department is proud to be touched daily by the men and women who visit our center, walk our hallways, and who always express their gratitude for the provision of a safe, fun, and graceful atmosphere in which to celebrate aging. So it is our recommendation to adopt the proclamation that you'll read tonight for the city's support in the Older Americans Month in the month of May, and to recognize all of Villarica's older adults who need love, care, and feel a sense of value.
And thank you, Lisa, for sharing that, because I hope I didn't sound trite when I said I'm not sure why we have a particular month. But we were, we were brought up, respect your elders. I mean, that's what we were taught from the time we were kids. So that was supposed to happen every day, right? But this is a quality of life thing. And I think with everything that's going on, even during COVID, there were certain senior centers that made sure that there was still personal contact. And so what y'all do is vital. And I know I, for one, I'm sure all of us up here, really appreciate what y'all are doing over there and that you're growing.
Yes, we are. Very much so.
And yesterday, they could even be out with the children and everything, too. And it's different. Some of these people are playing pickleball, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, you've got the much older, and then you've got ones that are doing stuff some of us can't do anymore, you know, depending on our needs or whatever. So it's great. Thank you for what y'all do over there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now for some fun with utilities. Well, it's not John, but John wrote up. Okay, so Cleghorn Pump Station, Forest Main Relocation. Eric?
Good afternoon. The Cleghorn Pump Station is a major system component in the wastewater transportation system. Its primary purpose is to transport and collect wastewater from the central and eastern portion of town to the west wastewater plant. With significant growth in the east portion of town and limited capacity at the north plant, the importance and expandability of the Cleghorn Pump Station becomes even more important. We have received two bids with Grizzard and Associates being the lowest bid. Relocating the Forest Main was determined to be the best alternative to reduce the limitation of the Forest Main and decrease the length of the pumped wastewater, thereby increasing the capacity of the lift station. Further to do with on Cleghorn Lift Station, as of right now, we do have, just a little background, we do currently have eight lift stations that do pump this. This is our largest lift station out in the field at this point.
Okay, so is this the one we're redirecting?
That is correct.
It's not? No? Yes?
This is the Forest Main that is inexplicably long. It runs all the way from Cleghorn Lift Station to the west plant, and it doesn't need to. And the longer the Forest Main, the more work the pumps have to do. Conversely, the shorter the Forest Main, the less work. So we can, if we shorten the Forest Main, we can send more flow to the lift station, and it can do the job without having to be rebuilt or upsized. And that's, that's where we're headed.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? It's budgeted. We need it. I'm good. Any, you know, I lost count of my consent items. Let's see, this would be 10. Yeah. Any opposition to making this consent item number 10? Righty.
Thank you.
Okay, finance. Hi, Jennifer.
Good afternoon. Okay, the first agenda item is the renewal of the GMA for property and liability insurance. As you know, we partner with GMA, and they broker this insurance coverage for us through GMA. We received, we have to fill out an application, turn in a lot of our capital assets, properties, vehicles, equipment. And we received a quote back maybe about a week ago. And we have a new quote for this upcoming year, starting, or upcoming plan of May 1st being $374,197. That is a 15% increase than last year. However, that is, according to GMA, the average increase of most plans. Some were a little bit higher, some were a little bit lower. But they said that was pretty much the average, and that's due to just an overall unfavorable claim trends in automo, in automobiles and property, as well as the high inflation levels.
That's the part that hit me, the red flag. I looked at that, and I go 15%. And think about any time, anything in your life, health insurance, whatever, jumps by 15% insurance on your home for us. And it said it was based on, because I read, I kept looking for a reason. It said trends. It didn't say our trends. It just said trends. So it wasn't like we've had a bad record. This is happening across the board. And the most distressing part is inflation, and that is avoidable. But that's a speech for another time, that we're still experiencing this amount of inflation, and it's impacting everyone, including government entities. So.
Yes.
I hate to see that go up that much, but we don't have any choice.
I'm sorry. And also remember, too, in looking at our vehicles, we actually had eight more vehicles added to our fleet, as well as, this includes the coverage on the property that we just purchased, the church property. So there was additions to our assets also that needed to be covered that would increase this premium as well.
Questions from the counsel? We can make this a consent item, yes? Any opposition to making this consent item number 11? Okay, that'll be 11. All right. Number two, approve the excess cyber liability insurance renewal.
Yes, with the prior agenda item, there is some coverage for cybersecurity, but it's only up to $250,000. So for the past four years, this will be year five, we have asked for an additional quote to, for excess cyber liability insurance. We have not received the official documentation. It usually takes another week or so before we actually get that. But I did reach out to them, knowing that we had the deadline of this meeting. And she said that the estimated quoted price is around $16,000 plus the taxes and the fees associated with that. So this request is to ask for approval for the excess cyber liability insurance for the estimated quoted price of $16,000 plus taxes and fees.
We were expecting this, right? Hadn't we already talked about this, the need for it and why we were doing it?
Yes.
Okay, questions from the counsel?
Yeah, is this a first for Villarica? We didn't have this last year.
No, we've had it for four years. This will be year five.
Okay, how much was it last year?
Last year. Last year it was just over 16,000. So it's with taxes and fees, it's around a 12 to 15% increase as well.
Pretty steady, been pretty steady all along.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone opposed to making this consent number 12? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager, Mr. Barber. Or in this case, Mr. Denny coming up to.
It's just me.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. The last time stormwater utility was discussed in this room, some of you, especially you, Mayor, expressed a desire for something that would help you or your constituents to better understand the topic. As you know, stormwater utility is becoming a very common feature in governments across Georgia. And it's a topic that many communities have dealt with trying to explain it to their constituents. Cobb County, for example, is dealing with a stormwater utility proposal right now. Although they are much further along than we are. Some of my colleagues in the communications offices of these cities have put together explainer videos. And today I am presenting with you a demonstration of a video that I've created. It's been vetted by Bobby and others involved in this project. And I don't think it, at this point, is premature to start thinking about how we message to our citizens as to whether or not this is a project that's worth considering. Now, in a few minutes, Bobby will come up here and discuss this project in far greater detail than this video, which is only two minutes and 40 seconds long. And it's designed only to explain what the utility is and what we hope to accomplish. Obviously, this is a big topic that merits a lot of public input. So this introductory video is something that we could put on our Facebook page or our YouTube channel. And something you can link to in your emails with constituents. So with your permission, I will ask the clerks to go ahead and present the video.
Most people don't think about stormwater unless they drive through a flooded street or see standing water in their yard. But even in a small city such as ours, it can be a real problem. Stormwater is simply rainwater that runs off your property and large commercial properties. Instead of soaking into the ground, this runoff follows natural terrain until it winds up in places it shouldn't be. That runoff also carries contaminants that hurt plants and worse. Villarica is considering a project that would help us better maintain and even improve our stormwater system. This will help us to prevent flooding, as well as prevent property damage, protect our streams and drinking water, and promote economic health and the quality of life for residents. Rooftops, roadways, parking lots, and other paved surfaces are impervious. That means rain can't soak through, so it flows across those surfaces carrying contaminants like yard fertilizer, pet waste, oils, and pesticides. This polluted water flows until it reaches the nearest stream or lake. Many of the city's current stormwater pipes are 20 to 30 years old or older. If they fail, the roads and sidewalks above could also fail. These repairs are costly, but it is much less expensive to take a proactive approach and correct issues before they become problems. The proposed stormwater utility would collect fees and the revenue would only go to pay for these infrastructure improvements. It's an investment that will keep the city in compliance with state and federal regulations, keep major roadways passable, avoid flooding of homes and businesses, keep our streams healthy for people and wildlife, and replace and upgrade our current infrastructure. It's certainly not fair for residents to bear this cost alone. Your rooftops, driveways, and patios don't create as much stormwater as the large rooftops and parking lots of large commercial buildings. Under our current thinking, residents will pay a fixed rate, while businesses would be assessed rates based on the square footage of their rooftops, parking lots, and overall size of their impervious surface. This is a problem we all share and as a community, we can solve it. We're interested in your thoughts, so let us know what you think.
No applause.
No, thank you.
When was that, when was that video created?
Pardon me?
When was that video created?
That was created about two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
I got invited to the preview, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I heard a familiar voice on that video.
You heard a familiar robot voice.
Isn't that something?
Is that AI?
Exactly.
Wow.
That's what I said. That was amazing. And scary at the same time. AI stuff is scary.
So anyway, that is my presentation and I guess I can just turn it over to Bobby then.
Thank you for putting that together, Ken. I really think in the end, visuals, data, information that's easily understandable by people will be very helpful.
With that, I, I thought the video was well done. I included, I had Teresa include a PowerPoint that I put together to go in y'all's packet. About half that PowerPoint does exactly what this video does. And the back half goes into a little bit more detail on how fees are arrived at. And how things, how the plan talks about credits. I mean, you have to do a credit policy, you know, for people that are doing what they're supposed to do. They don't have to pay the full amount. They can, you know. An interesting statement on one of the slides. You know, a lot of, a lot of folks talk about stormwater utility as a tax. You know, taxes are based on value, monetary value. The service fee on stormwater utility is based on the square footage of an impervious surface. A $5 million house and a $100,000 house that have the same impervious square footage would pay the exact same thing per month on a stormwater fee. We did, quick story, we did, we implemented a utility in the city of Carterville when I was there in 2007. And I'll bleed back a little bit on the three proposals that we have. And Jamison, Mark Teal, and myself, we rated those three proposals based on the criteria that Mark had set up. When I got to the, to the vendor that we ended up recommending unanimously, their methodology on what they put together and how they're going to, how they propose to run, put together this program is exactly the same methodology as we used in Carterville. Involves setting up a Stormwater Action Committee. They call, it's called SWAC. Made up of about no more than 16 members from across the entire population of Villarica. Professionals, politicians, homeowners, HOA presidents, everybody that's going to have skin in the game participates in these meetings. As the vendor works their way through the process, there's four or five meetings with the SWAC committee on keeping everybody up to speed on exactly where everything is and how everything is put together. We, just a quick, quick little story. We had, we did that in 2007. And I was baking like a fool back then. I mean, 50 cakes in a holiday season for friends. So we were talking about setting up this committee. And Andrew Reese, who is one of the, one of the southeast renowned stormwater individuals, ended up leading our, the engineering firm that did our program. And I said, well, what is the secret to getting everybody to show up to these meetings? He said, you have to feed them. So we did that. And I baked an apple cake for the first meeting. And after that first meeting, every time we talked about scheduling the next meeting, Mr. Reese would look at me and he says, is there a possibility? And I'm like, a possibility for what? That you bring another one of those apple cakes like you did before. He wanted one every single time. But anyway, when we got through with that process and got it ready to present to council, everybody was on the same page. Monthly fee that we started out, the base charge in Carterville was like $3.75 a month to residents. And that is the base fee. Commercials would pay multiple of that based on how much square footage they have. And Stephanie, I know you know exactly what I'm talking about because I understand your husband is in the stormwater business at Douglas County. The need, and I've got an item on the agenda that will pretty much self-explain why we need dollars to fix some of these issues. Rather than rely on the general fund, which is property taxes, to keep funding this stuff. These projects cost a lot of money. And based on what we can set aside for maintenance in our stormwater system, the one we have on the agenda is like four years' worth of maintenance dollars to fund it, to fix it. And we just need a better way to do that. And if I'm not mistaken, Villarica is probably one of the last cities in the metropolitan area that doesn't have a utility. But obviously, you know, I'm a proponent. If you worked in stormwater as long as I have, then fixing things is what you do. And to me, this is the most logical way to do it is this.
Okay, how do you determine what the ERU?
Here's what happens. You're, if we choose this firm to do this analysis and put together the program to get to council, what they will do is they will create a very large sample set of all the residential areas in Villarica. And they will compute what the square footage of impervious is in those areas. And once they compile all that, they will take a median value of square footage to set as the base rate.
That's how the big house and the small house all get divvied.
Yes, yes.
So now, is it just the house or is it the driveway?
Driveway.
Every bit of it.
Rooftops, garages outside, everything is included in the calculation as far as, if rainwater can't penetrate it, it's included. And you choose the median value to set as your base rate. Now, once that is set, you figure out what you want to charge for the base rate. And then it's just, it's just simple spreadsheet work then, you know, to generate what you think you can generate per year. In Carterville, and I hate to keep comparing you to them, Carterville's a little bit bigger, even back when I was there. We wanted to generate about 400,000 a year to fix capital stuff. And the base rate was, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'm getting old, was $3.75. That would generate 400,000 a year based on a bigger city like that. And I mean, you know, we've got millions of dollars worth of fixes in this town, trust me. And we can't do it all at one time. You just have to build your plan, figure out what you want to try to collect in a year, and use that to fix the problems.
What does ERU stand for?
Equivalent Residential Unit. That is your base rate.
What's that, which one is that?
ERU stands for Equivalent Residential Unit. And everybody, nobody spells it out. It's just so easy to say ERUs, ERUs, ERUs. Yeah. But that's what it is.
Except that we didn't know what it was. Okay.
And if I may, I'd just like to point out, I know that there's a lot of pushback with a stormwater fee. This is probably something that should have been implemented a long time ago, in my opinion, just because, once again, that money has to come from somewhere. Right now, we're putting a Band-Aid on the problems rather than actually fixing them. And it's no different than putting a patch on a hole in your roof. That, that patch, that tarp is only going to hold up for so long before it's just going to give in. And then your damage that you're going to have to pay is going to be much higher than what it would be if you fix it before that problem becomes a bigger problem. But I'd like to point out 911 dispatch. You know, a lot of that is funded, not just from the general fund, but also on your phone bill. So your phone bill includes a fee on there that funds that. So that's, that is what the stormwater fee is equivalent to. It is going to fund a entirely different utility. This is not just a fee for the heck of it. This is a fee that is going to fund an entirely different utility.
And it can't be used on anything else but stormwater projects.
It doesn't operate like Congress, huh? They just kind of shifted over to something else.
So what's in front of us now is the approval of a proposal fee of $135,500 for a company to develop the plan. Is that what it is?
The Integrated Science and Engineering Proposals, 135,500. The three of us that, that raided these three companies unanimously picked them. And like I said, me, because of, when I got into it, I'm like, oh, this, this is perfect. I don't think you can get a, I don't think you can get a utility passed unless you involve, unless, unless you do a committee.
What were they called again?
Stormwater Action Committee, SWAC for short, S-W-A-C. It just makes everything easier to, you don't have, you don't have to go out and try to sell everybody on every single thing because you're hoping your, your members help you out. You know, in their neighborhoods and various areas.
Yeah, I saw something, I saw something in the report on the quotes that had to do like with $20,000 worth of public communication or something like that. And all I thought about is not so much about the money, but what's really going to make a difference is a committee like that and individual council people. Hopefully you have some, you know, communication with your ward because that personal contact and I think your idea of a town hall is a good idea. I have a couple of things I want to cover, but does somebody else have a question before I get into my little list I scribbled? I mean, some of it's been in my head because they're, they're questions I have. Yes, Councilman Moptan.
So Bobby, my only question regarding, so we hire this company to do this survey study. But then two, three, four, five years from now, Villarica changes. There's more housing, there's more commercial, industrial, et cetera. So do we have to do an entirely new study in a few years or do we have like a base set and we can just?
You can use the one that you started with, Forever and Ever Amen, if you're happy with it. Because, because as, as new structures are built and new subdivisions are built, the square foot, the impervious areas, as new customers come onboard, they're going to have, they're going to be charged just like the original group will.
Right, but do we ever need to reevaluate the, like, I mean, for example, let's say this study says $4 for a house. Do we need a new study to, if we ever consider raising or reducing that?
By the time you get to that point, you'll have enough staff people that can guide you through that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's more or less what I was thinking about, like, because if you have more, maybe you have more population, so you, you're going to have more impervious surface, but maybe it's spread out among population.
And, and you know, you, you may, you may change at some point in the future, like, well, you know, instead of collecting 400,000 a year, we, we got so much, we got so many problems, we may want to go 600,000. And then you just have to evaluate the rate that you're using and just like you do a water rate or sewer rate.
Okay. So it won't necessarily require a new study, okay?
Nope.
Okay, I see this is the budget. We've actually budgeted $150,000 for this particular item.
That's correct.
So it's actually in the budget.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, so question number one, and Councilman Moptan, you'll probably remember something about this. We added on a fee to our water and sewer and you and I put a sunset on it. Well, everybody eventually voted for it, but we put a sunset and it had to do with, I think, infrastructure. And Tom, you were here. And the reason we put a sunset on it is so that we could revisit it, right? It's not in perpetuity. You're going to come back and revisit it. And it was based on, I believe, when the bonds were paid off. Do we even have those bonds? Do you remember that? It was going to be based on, it would be removed at a time in the future when something was paid off. And it had to do with And it had to do with, okay, so we need to check that out because we need to revisit it and see, is it, is it paying for what it was supposed to? Because it is supposed to come off at some time.
My recollection was that, for some reason, we couldn't put a, like, a hard sunset date on it. But then what we did on the bills is that it's itemized, so that way it just didn't get mixed in, and we could remember.
We would see it.
We can just.
And guess who hasn't been paying the water bill at home that then looked at and it triggered my memory of, is it being used for what it was meant to? Okay, so we need to find out about that. All right, now, just so you'll know, in Cobb County recently, this came up. I believe it was a seven-hour meeting. It was a very hot topic. I watched a number of the comments, everything else. I did not watch the whole meeting. I don't have that kind of time. But this is a big deal, and I think it's really important that we not rush, that we take our time and make sure, we want to know whether, we want to know if we're spending this money that we're going to do it. I mentioned the sunset, and that's related to this. Say I buy an old house. There's so much to do on it, right? Whoever owned it before, in fact, I had a family one like this where we had to go in and take over it. Nothing had been done in years. There's a lot to do. There's no way you can, in a sense, pay it with your regular income. So say I had to get fees from myself, some sort of way, to slowly start making those. There's going to come a time where then I just have to maintain, right? I'm not going to have those fifty projects forever. Those are the critical ones I have to start. And then it's a matter of maintain, it's going to be a lot more money upfront. Once I get it up to snuff, then I only have to maintain it. I mean, that matters, right? But it's not going to cost the same when I just maintain. The other thing that I want us to remember is, right now, we are, this is based on all the old areas of town, yes? Would that be correct pretty much? Unless we have stuff that's too small, that's taken the water that we put in, or we didn't require the right thing from developers. So it's old Villa Rica, none of this was required, people's yards are washed away, all kind, I mean, it's a mess. It is. It's out here, it's down there.
But there's a lot of old Villa Rica, trust me.
Okay, so at some point, old Villa Rica will get done. And anything new, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm looking at you for this. New developers that are coming in, we make them do it. And I'll get to that too, because that has to do with the last thing on credits. We make them do this. So we're not going to have to do it for them going forward, correct? Okay, and we're making them do it now. So that's a good thing, so that we will not end up back in this boat. The commercial buildings, I made a note, only because I think in the end, we're going to want to know. If it's four dollars on my bill, I might be going, oh, it's, you know, it's four dollars, you know, that's what they're charging for coffee. That's why I don't buy coffee out. But for the big industrial, I think we want to have idea what it's going to do to them. What's it going to do to Publix and Sprinkles and, you know, our small businesses? What will it be for them? They're going to want to know that. We'll have somebody on that committee?
Well, when the study is complete, you will know all of that. And the ordinance that this company, this engineering firm will put together will be presented to Mayor and Council for approval. In other words, all of those questions that you have will be answered before we get to that.
Yeah, that's why, see, you're talking me into spending the money. No, no, it's okay. I'm not, I'm actually being serious. You're making the sales pitch for why we need to do this. So, all right, so the credit policy, I was grateful to see that. It's like the last two, because I was thinking about, how do we do this to businesses that come in and already have their retention and detention?
They have.
Why should they get stuck with somebody who has none of that?
You can't do this ordinance without a credit policy. You can't.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be right.
You can't. Now, that's correct.
It wouldn't be fair, just, whatever we want to call it. Okay, so I was glad to get to that because I know there's some of us that have rain barrels. We actually have gutters.
Keep in mind, what you're reading in that PowerPoint, those are just example calculations that I, that I put in there. In other words, you may come up with something totally different, but it just gives you the idea of how it's put together.
Okay, so I recovered that there'll come a time that we'll get more caught up and it'll be a matter of maintenance, not the fact that we have to do millions and millions of dollars things from years ago. And so that's why my preference, I don't know what everybody else's, would be, it would be to revisit it at some time in the future.
You can do it anytime you want.
Which requires a sunset. And they do this at the state level with things. They do this at, well, I don't know if they do any of it at the federal level anymore. Well, yeah, I don't think so. Just, that's, that's another story.
Well, you know, with any.
It doesn't make it go away. It just means you have to revisit and reevaluate it again.
Well, you know, I don't really think you have to revisit it, but you can if you want to, at any given time. It's just like the water and sewer rates. I mean, you don't have a sunset set on them. But if you, if you need to raise them and revisit it, you, your body, your, our legislative body can do that.
Yeah, the, well, the reason I was talking about revisiting with the sunset is we're talking about the whole reason we need this is because stuff wasn't done for years and it wasn't required of people and businesses to do it back then.
Based on.
That will not be the same condition in the future. Hence, a reason to reevaluate, just like a comprehensive plan. You look at what you've done. But anyway, that's.
I would estimate, if we got the utility approved and started collecting fees, you wouldn't need to revisit it for twenty years at least.
Well, that may be, that may very well be true because of what we have.
If we got three fifty to four hundred thousand, or even two hundred and fifty thousand that we generated over the next twenty years, I mean, it'll fix a lot, but it's not going to fix, you know, we've got one right now that's over a million dollars.
I'm almost to the end of the list. But the reason is, there's a strong belief amongst people that once government starts getting the money from you, it never stops. And I'll give you a few examples. It's called the Florida Turnpike. Don't worry, when it's built, we were not going to collect this money for it, you know, decades later. Up here, what, what road would it be? Four hundred. Do you remember the toll booths? And people finally got upset because they said, wait a second, you told us that once that was done. And so there's a reason, because they go, well, then why are you still taking the money if the, if what we're doing isn't the same as when you said you had to rebuild it? And that's how you end up with what you don't want to. And if we don't do the education right on this, if we're not, if we're not sold on it and if people aren't agreeable to it, you will end up with what happened in Cobb County, and you know what they called it there? A rain tax. That we're getting charged for the rain that falls. Accurate or not, it was the perception. And it doesn't matter, and I'm not saying it's not true, but it doesn't matter if it's true or not, if it's the people's perception. And they have a reason to think that way. And at that point, it got tabled up there, and I imagine it'll be revisited. But education of the public, that we buy into it, that we understand, and we're bought, that we, that you have buy-in is absolutely necessary, because people are getting hit, and I'm done, I'm done in like thirty seconds. People are getting hit left and right with, oh, a little money here, a little money here, a little, and it doesn't sound like much to us. But we, we're living it. We see it. And so everybody's going to be watching, looking, go, well, do we need this or is it a rain tax? And that's what it's called in Cobb County. We don't want it called that here.
Well, I'm a former Cobb County and then quite frankly.
I thought you might relate.
Those folks are crazy. I cannot believe Cobb hasn't had a utility for years. They have.
Bobby, I was going to ask you that question. How do they get away, how do they get away with not having this all this time?
Because the Water and Sewer Department and the general fund has funded every single repair that they've done. And they have done billions over the last twenty years.
And I guess when you got big industry and commercial like Lockheed and Town Center Mall and Cobb Galleria, you can pay for all that, right?
Well, all of, all of the, the older subdivisions built as far back as mid-eighties. They put in uncoated corrugated metal drainage pipe. Well, all the bottoms have rotted out. Cobb's gone in, in full subdivisions and replaced all those. And with funding, like I said, Water and Sewer Fund and the general fund, that's the way they've done it.
Right.
And.
I'm a former Cobb County in myself. That's where I was born and raised, or raised, I should say.
Well.
And I grew up in one of those mid-eighties neighborhoods.
Cobb has always been my model big brother. I mean, I, man, I stole ordinances from them back when I was at Powder Springs left and right because they'd already gone through it. They've already been through it. Why recreate the wheel when you can borrow from them? But yeah, I, I saw that presentation when the, when the meeting got heated at Cobb.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I did. And, but sooner or later, I believe, I mean, administrations may have to change, but sooner or later, they're going to do it. I can't believe they haven't already done it.
Well, and to be honest, when people feel comfortable with their government, I don't know that they ever feel comfortable, but when a trust factor is there, it makes a big difference to people. And building that trust factor sometime takes time.
Part of this does involve some public meetings, town hall types.
I know you mentioned you thought that was a good.
And this is where we are, we need input, let's talk about it, y'all, you know. And it's, I've been in some ugly town hall meetings in my life, but those were not ugly at all. They were most informative. But you got, you got, you got to plead your case and show the citizens what the problem is and get them to buy in and.
And that takes time.
Yep.
Okay.
But that's what, that's what.
Questions, comments?
That's what this will do, though. This will allow us to know exactly what it is that we would be looking at so that we can educate citizens and educate ourselves on exactly what it is that we need. We've talked about wanting to be self-sufficient, that of course, that's the goal as far as our, our water goes. And this would definitely be a step towards that, I believe. You've got to, you've got to think, the, the funding for our stormwater currently comes from where? Our general fund, which is from where? Our taxes.
That's where water and sewer used to come from too.
But the, the goal, I know during your campaign, you mentioned the keeping those taxes low, keeping that mileage rate low. And without implementing this stormwater fee, your taxes are going to have to increase. You're not, or at the very least, you're not going to ever be able to roll back because we have got millions of dollars of projects that are out there that we're putting a tarp on the roof right now, is what we're doing. And ultimately, if we do not fix this correctly, it will end up costing us a lot more in the long run. And keep in mind, again, I want to reiterate the idea that, that this utility is, the fee is meant to fund itself. So you've got your employees that are paid out of, out of the stormwater fund. You've got your equipment. Those are going to continuously need to be upgraded. It's going to pay for the maintenance and the, the necessary items that are needed to do that maintenance. So it's not something that, when, when you say that the government is charging, taking this, this money from the citizens and you just don't get to stop doing it. You don't get to stop doing it because it's a, it's a utility. Yes, we can revisit it at some point and see exactly where we need, roll back if we need to.
Or it might be the amount.
Right. But this is something that will put us where we need to be. We have got millions of dollars of projects that are needed right now. And that's where a lot of the problems are. Without making sure that your stormwater is where it needs to be, I mean, think about the roads that are washing away from stormwater issues. And just, there's, there's multiple different things that we could sit here and talk about that having this separate utility, it's a separate utility. It is not, it's an added, it's something extra that would be given. And instead of coming out of the general fund, and I think that that is really important to note, this is not coming, right now, it's being funded from the general fund, which is taxpayer money. You'll never be able to roll back your mileage rate. Keeping those taxes as low as possible, adding this additional utility with this fee is going to allow you to be able to keep those, that mileage rate as low as you possibly can.
And keep in mind that if we create this utility, it's its own budget, just like the Water and Sewer budget is. It's a standalone budget. It'll have a capital improvement program that goes with it.
Enterprise fund operates by itself, and it has the fees pay for everything in that area.
And it's a fee, not a tax.
And you know what your projected income, based on the study that's been done, what you can look to collect in a year's time. So you know what your estimated revenue is going to be, so you act accordingly with what you can fix. And if you've got a couple of employees you're paying out of it, that's fine. I mean, she says the equipment, maybe a couple pickup trucks, whatever. It's, it's its own standalone budget, that no transfer in, no transfer out. That's the way it's got to sit.
Mayor, and I just wanted to also address, I mean, right now, our issues are in quote, old Villa Rica. But in twenty years, what's considered new Villa Rica will become old Villa Rica. And all those things, those that developers installed and whatnot, they're going to need maintenance too. So it's just, it's not, I don't see it as an issue that's just going to kind of repair itself once we fix these things.
It won't repair, but it won't be the same extent. It's the maintenance along the way, instead of, oh, I've got to pay for things that didn't get done for thirty years.
Right. And hopefully, I mean, by having this, we're going to kind of stay ahead of the curve on, on those maintenance concerns so they're not going to be as large, but they're still going to exist. And I just, I just wanted to say, it's not, I don't want to put all the blame on the back of old Villa Rica for why something like this is necessary. That's all I was trying to get to.
Well.
Well, it's just the way things were. I mean, I grew up in a small town. I mean, curb and gutter didn't exist where I was, you know? We didn't do that. We had little, you know, roads.
Keep in mind, and I don't want to throw rocks at the people that were in Villa Rica in the past, but in the last six years, things have been done two hundred percent better than they were done twenty years ago. I can assure you of that.
And there's always going to be improvements in processes and technologies.
And that's not going to need as much attention as fast as some of the stuff that we've got right now that's falling apart.
So I, I don't think it's a matter of anybody doing anything at fault in the past. It was just different. Guess what? We had little cars back then too, our small, well, kind of depends which years. But you know, for a lot of years, the narrow roads were sufficient. You know, they're just, and when you're talking small towns, I mean, mine was small when I grew up. It's a different world now, but we just didn't build all that sort of thing.
Have y'all been to Powder Springs lately? That's where I grew up. It's not, uh-uh.
I did have one other thing that I think will be helpful, because I'm really not arguing for or against, believe it or not. I'm making you prove your case. That's what I'm asking for. It's kind of like your kid when they ask if they can do something. Well, you know, right?
Well, let me say this.
Show me why or how.
I don't want to interrupt you, but if you approve this study, the case will be proven. I can assure you.
Okay, so lastly, I think I'll promise this, because we do, we need to move on. We got another meeting in a few hours. This is a biblical reference about taking, you know, the log out of your own eye till you were, before you worry about the spec in your neighbors. In other words, before I judge you, I better look in my own. People are going to be looking at us and say, are we doing all that we can? I'll give you just a little example, because I don't know what happened on this. When GDOT wouldn't give us, but they would allow us to maintain all that asphalt over there on sixty-one, I had asked, and I don't know what happened to this, I don't know what the answer was that we had got. I had asked Mr. Barbert sometime, can we reason with them? Because that thing is never full. It's never even half-full. And this is where it goes into green infrastructure. And what we're talking about is, we go, go forward with retention ponds, detention ponds and everything else, is there is a better way to do this than the way we did it in the past, where you're using foliage implants and things like that.
They're improving every day.
And there is a really good one, yes. I went over and saw it in the industrial park. It's also at the car wash. I've seen theirs. But why did we keep, why did we have to keep all that asphalt? I wanted us to ask them, and I don't know how it happened. Obviously, it was either or, no, or it didn't get asked. We paved that whole thing in asphalt again, and maybe they wouldn't let us when we probably didn't need more than a third of it. And my request was, can we see if they'll make us do all that in asphalt? Will they allow us to put grass in, tear up the asphalt, put grass in the park? Because it's never all used. I'd like us to do more of that. I don't want to do it and not have parking spaces downtown. But we're going to have to prove to people whether. But we're gonna have to prove to people, whether it's that, or a stopped-up drain, or we're not keeping the leaves out, and, and the gravel's all going in the stormwater by my house of whatever comes off a pumpkin down. We're gonna have to show that we're doing our part. That's it. That's my promise.
My, um, one of my mission statements, and, and, and people that work for me will, have heard me say it 100 times. We, as the city, us, employees, what we're doing, we have to set the example for everybody else to follow. Because if we don't follow our own rules, what's the point?
Exactly. That's what I, anybody else? Okay, so tonight, I imagine we'll show the video and have a brief discussion, and tell people if they wanna hear an elongated one, you wanna watch this video. Um-
Another four-arm meeting coming up.
Well, we're, we're doing what we can to consent. I don't, I don't see how we put this on consent. They need to see the video tonight. I just think we can do a whole lot less discussion tonight. Are y'all okay with that? Because if people are gonna get buy-in, they wanna hear something about this. Okay.
I was getting ready to say, i- i- if y'all expect me to remember what I just went through, I'm sorry. It's not gonna happen.
Exactly. It, it's been said, and it's, uh, saved forever. Okay, um, we did the video, we did you. That'll come back this evening, and we'll go to three, reduction, a speed limit on Clearview Street, something else we haven't talked about at all. Just kidding. Needs to be addressed, though. Yeah. Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, um, on the Clearview Street, and Chief, I might need you a few minutes. Um, when we got concerns about speeding on Clearview, when school finished their new parking lot and all that stuff, you know, we, we went over with our old traffic counter, and, and, and it's my favorite, by the way. It gives the best results. We went over and did a study on that, and, and, and in your packet, the results of the study that was done on, uh, October 16, 23, to October 25, 23, if you look at the second sheet, the 85th percentile speed, and, and I, and I put a note on your agenda cover sheet, just to explain what that is again. And just about all of, the, all the speeding parameters in transportation are geared to the 85th percentile. That's just the way transportation engineering's done. Anyway, we did that first study, and the ordinance, I'll stop. The ordinance, the traffic calming ordinance that we have right now, states that if you have an 85th percentile speed that is 10 miles an hour or more over the posted speed limit, you've got a serious issue with speeding. And with this first study, you can see, we had a 44 miles an hour, 85th percentile speed, posted 25. I mean, really? And it even gives you the time, when, when the, the peak time of the violations, you know, uh, at 2:28 PM in the afternoons. You know, when kids are getting out. But anyway, um, Hal had his crews put in some, some speed humps?
Three or four. There's four of them. Three.
There's three of them over there. And we were, the, the intention was, was all the time to go and re-study it. We, we had, at the time, we just had the one counter, and Mr. Barber had like four or five other streets that, that we wanted to study. So we just, we pulled that one up, we, we set it over here, we set it over here, we set it over here. Anyway, during the middle of all that, we ended up, we being, y'all forgive me, I, we, it's we, 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 I'm still Villareca. You know, that's, that, that, that's who I am. But, um, we purchased a new radar-based unit that we had not used before. It was supposed to have been the newest and greatest thing. We put the unit over there. And, um, our guys didn't really put it in the right place. They put it pretty close to even with the speed hump. Well, the 85th percentile speed, when that analysis was done, was 14 miles an hour. So that's the speed you go across a hump. So anyway, we threw that out, and we went back over there, and, and I got with Mark, and I said, okay, bring the old counter back and set it right here, midway between a couple of the speed humps. We can tell what the speed's doing. All right, when we did that, and we reran the software, the 85th percentile speed fell from 44 to 22. That's even lower than the posted limit. So there's no speeding issue over there now. It's, it's been corrected. Um, and, and, and I know we talked some about, um, doing the school zone thing over there. And I, and, and I'll lend to the chief with, with those kinda questions, 'cause I, I've never done that before. I don't know what's, what's involved with, with setting up a school zone, but, but from where I'm sitting, there's not a problem there anymore.
Okay, you're saying we don't need to reduce the speed limit, then everything's been fixed?
It's fixed.
Bobby, I guess my question, though, is, in the March study, or excuse me, in the October study, you had over 4,000 vehicles analyzed, but in the March study, you had less than 75.
It was small.
So how did that happen?
You know how, you know how it happened? All the kids were going some other way.
Right.
They started using South Street.
That's what I started wondering about.
And that is my concern ultimately about why the school zone may still be necessary, is that-
We've put humps on South Street, too. We got three over there now.
When did they go in?
Um-
Oh, okay. I had no idea, 'cause I'm not over there that often.
Human nature, when you, when you make one, one, one area, one, one corridor difficult, they'll, they'll find another way. That's easier, so.
And there's gonna be another street opening up over there, so I, I don't have, to me, my whole goal is, if we get them slowed down, it's safe. I don't care how it happens, as long as it's legal. However, and I don't know, you can speak to it, I don't know if it's real complicated to do, uh, school zone, but if we slow the speed down, that's the goal. If that happens and we reach it, but, um, that's your ward.
I mean, I still, I mean-
So you might have more details.
Exactly. I still have concerns, 'cause we're gonna eventually open up the metal arc there.
Yes.
I think there's more broader concerns about than Clearview. I think the area needs to be considered for the school zone. And I emailed Terry Jones with the school, um, the school district, and they all appear to be on, totally on board with the notion of a school zone. So, I, I mean, if it's the will of the council, I would like to give staff some direction to explore that, that possibility.
And that might help us decide, hey, that's worth it doing, or no, this worked. And if we got something that works that's less complicated, I don't know that. That's why I'm asking.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
And if we fix it, let's don't fix it again.
Well, that road isn't broke.
Well, I mean, I'm just-
So what will happen? What do you think?
I'm not saying we don't need to look at the school zone. I'd be glad to do that. I've never done that either. I can do the research to figure out what that consists of, and what the advantages are to the city, if there are any, or disadvantages or whatever. That's something I've gotta research and look into. But we've reduced it from 44 to 22. I, I think we fixed it. That's just my police, you know, I mean, that's just how I feel about it. But I, I work for you guys, so you tell me what you want me to do, and I'll do it.
Now, I agree. I agree. It's fixed on that road.
As soon as another road opens up, we need to go ahead and put the speed humps in, 'cause we know it's working.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, like-
Or at least run the test over there.
I mean, right, exactly. At least run a test, I mean, 'cause if we open up metal arc, and then people are gonna be speeding through there. People start using that as a cut-through to get from 78 over to 61. I mean, I just think you're gonna, and these roads are old Villareca roads, and they're all straight. There's no curvature. There's no, uh, inherent traffic calming in these roads. And that's why the speed bumps, humps are the, are the traffic calming measures you can take there, but. So I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead. I mean, I understand that if it's ain't broke, don't fix it. But, you know, it's much easier to get out in front of an issue, I think, than get behind it and then have to catch up. Kinda like what we just talked about with the stormwater issue.
Yeah, maybe we can give, by discussing it, we can give some direction as to, hey, if speed bumps do it and they're all slowed down, what do we care whether it's a school zone or not, because it slowed them down, or there's some advantage to having a school zone? I have no idea. Yes?
Well, I don't know that we can really say that we fixed the problem if we went from 4,000 vehicles down to only 74. We fixed the problem-
On that street?
People not traveling that street. Uh, well, that is a good thing, but those kids are still getting there somehow. So they're going to a different street, so how is that street, and, I mean, do we have a speed study from, it's South Street, right?
Also-
Do we have a speed-
We, we haven't studied South Street.
Okay, so, but we have, um, speed bumps over on South Street? So do we need to do a speed study and see exactly what the numbers are that are traveling on South Street? And what their speed is?
I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's definitely-
I mean, I would just like to know, I, I would like to know where the tra, I mean, obviously, the traffic, it, these kids are going to school somehow. So the traffic, we just went somewhere else.
I don't know, so we need to look, but is there a chance that school was out that week? Is that why the numbers are that low? We know there were, okay.
Yeah, I think I checked the dates to make sure it wasn't spring break.
That's what I wanna make sure, too.
Why don't we do a-
I do, I do know, Mark told me, he said, there's hardly no traffic on Clearview anymore, 'cause they're going out the other way.
Yeah.
And that's when we put the three over on South Street.
On South Street, okay.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Okay. Councilman and Monta Hand, they won't come back over here.
Also, I mean, we're comparing October to March, right? I, I don't recall what the weather was like that. I know it's, we've had decent weather, but October was probably dry. Uh, March was probably, we had the rainiest March, one of the rainiest Marches recently. Also, there's no high school football going on in March like there was in October. So I mean, and I'm not saying that we can ever get a perfect study to account for all the variable factors. Um, but I think, I, I'm just hard-pressed to believe that we went from over 4,000 cars to less than 75, and it's all because everyone but 75 folks decided they weren't gonna go down Clearview anymore. I, so I would like to see what the numbers look like on South Street now, for sure, but, you know, but, I mean, I didn't think, that was just my overall point. I, there could be other factors in there for why these cars are not the same, you know? The reports I heard back in the fall were people were there late at night, um, you know, drag, not drag racing, but doing donuts and kinda horse playing around. And so obviously, they weren't doing that now on Clearview, when you've got speed bumps to, you know, you can't do donuts and whatnot. But I, and the school zone is not gonna help that issue, right? That's a whole nother ball of wax. But at least it shows, the school zone may show that there's some attention being paid to this area. And the school zone's only really good from the August through May time period, anyway. But again, I think it shows there's an intention, uh, uh, attention being paid, and, and it's, these folks aren't left to kinda fend for themselves over there, but.
Councilman Carter?
Okay. Have we done a traffic study to see where the cars are going? I mean, you put out these counters, and they count cars, and you know which ones the streets are using the most to get out of there with. Have we done any of that, so we don't have to chase this rabbit?
Bobby? We'll have to chase the rabbit.
You can't.
With one counter, that, we're-
I mean, you put counters on all the roads that exited from the school, and you'll find out where the traffic's going.
Uh-huh. They're gonna start using Rocky Branch next, after they, that we've got-
If you put counters on all the roads around the school, you're gonna find out how the kids are getting out of there.
The statute provides you can, from what I read, that you could put on the roads within 1,000 feet of the schools. I mean, so that covers Rocky Branch going on the other side, that covers Wall Street, covers Clearview and South Street, and probably Metal Arc all the way to Commerce Drive. So I mean, that's just what I'm saying. I, I don't see why the whole area is in a school zone already.
So let me make a proposal, and y'all, see if this sounds good to you, that over time, we can't, we have one counter, that we move it around on all the streets they would use to exit the school. There'll be Rocky Branch. It won't be Metal Arc, but it eventually will be. Let's do a study, whatever works on your time scale. I don't know how y'all do that. The, you know, all that's involved with setting it up. We get the results back, and we see where the speed humps need to go. I don't know about the school zone thing. Maybe you can talk to somebody who's already done it, without having, right? You know, without having to, you know, reinvent the wheel, if there's other cities that know already how, you know, um, what's involved with that.
Chief?
Yes?
Chief, I have a question. I have a question, chief. If, if, if the city is successful in making that a school zone, does that, does that uncuff your hands any as far as the enforcement over there, based on that?
I, I can help answer that. Um, the school zone's defined by statutes of 1,000 feet of public school property is a school zone. The enforcement mechanism is a signage issue, so the statute defines certain signs we have to put up in a school zone. And what that does was generally, the chief, he would not be able to use speed detection devices for speeds. And they have to go at least 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. That does not apply in a properly marked school zone. So that's, that's the advantage of mark putting up the signage. It allows you to enforce speeds with the detection devices that speeds 5 miles an hour over the speed limit, if it's in a school zone.
Okay, so I don't have the expertise sitting up here to say how it should be done. That's when I look to y'all. My whole goal is that they're not zipping down those streets, and it's not dangerous. I don't care how it's solved.
Let me make sure I understand where we're going here. So my direction, I don't do the studies. Bobby's group does that.
Yeah.
With, with them, so I'm, he's gonna handle that part. Mine is to find out the speed, the school zone part, to see how hard it is, who all is involved, uh, things like that.
Is it worth the time and effort, or do the speed humps do the job? That, that's it, 'cause-
No problem.
Mayor, the, mayor, if I may, add to what you stated, though, about kinda the direction for the studies. I mean, we only have about a month and a half of school left, so, I mean, I, I understand that there are probably area, other areas in the city that may need this attention, but if we don't get this in the month and a half, then our sample is gone. And so, um, then, and that, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay.
Okay. Work really fast, Bobby. No, I just-
Well, we, 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 when we put a counter out, we, we always leave it for at least seven days to, to get weekend traffic and all that, you know? Right.
Listen, if it's a problem, just let us know, right? I mean, 'cause we don't know what you're doing on a daily basis. If it's a problem, hopefully, we can get it, but just let us know.
Okay.
Or let me, and I'll send it to the council, whatever works. Okay.
So just real quick.
Yes.
So if, if this is just a signage issue as far as it being a school zone, are you saying that we could just put signs up right now to properly have that signage to have it applied as a school zone?
Yeah, it, it is a school zone by law.
So we could just get signs and put them up?
But we can't enforce it without the proper signs.
So, but with, if we were to put up those signs, then we could do that now?
We can.
So, oh, that's interesting, Kevin. I didn't realize that. So just by the fact that it's within 1,000 foot already, it's already a school zone?
That's right.
And so right now, all we're doing is lacking that proper signage.
That's what it sounds like.
I'll work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I have to, Kevin, it has to be on the radar license, so, correct?
Yeah, that's a separate issue. If, if it's a road that you're allowed to run radar on, you tip, you would not be able to write a ticket unless they're 10 miles an hour over the speed limit.
Right.
That limit does not apply in a school zone, but it still would have to be a street that, that you're approved to use radar.
Yeah, it's gotta be approved through the state for us to run laser radar on. So just because we deem it a school zone doesn't mean we can legally run radar laser on it until we make sure it's on the license. I don't think it's on the license.
I don't think it is.
Sir?
I don't think it is.
Yeah, I don't think it's on the license. So we will have to add it to the license. To do that, the state has to come study it, things like that, to make sure, dah, 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 dah. I don't think, and I'm just speaking out loud, I don't think they will do that with speed humps on the road.
So let me just-
'Cause they'll do the same study we did, and they're gonna show that it doesn't, because of like, what Bobby said, we're at 22 now instead of 44. If it stayed at 44, then yeah, they would put it on there. But if it's at 22 now, they're not gonna deem it a problem and add it to the speed.
Because it isn't. Now, you're saying it's not on there, so does that mean you couldn't have gone over there and run radar-
No.
Any day know-how?
The only thing we could write over there is too fast for conditions. And that, you know, that, and that's fine. That's, that's a charge, and it'll slow people down when they see us over there, but it's not, it's not-
Speed humps are there all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, and, uh, Georgia DOT, they don't like speed humps very much.
We like children staying alive, though. And the people on the sides of the streets.
You know, if, if he applies to get Clearview put on the radar license, and they come out here and the speed humps are there, they're not gonna study it until you remove them.
But even if there's an exception, or even if it's already designated a school zone, I mean, that's the part I don't know. That's the part I'm curious about.
I'm just telling you how it's been in my past. I, I, you know.
Do we care if it, it's fixed? I mean, if it's fixed, and the people are going at the speed limit or below, that's our goal.
We can get signage, we can get signage- We can get signage, we can get signage.
I don't know that we have to fix it more, but if we have the signage and we have the speed humps and that does the job, I mean, I don't.
If we have to write too fast for conditions, then I guess they'll accept that, but I don't.
We'll get signage changed.
Matt, this is in your ward.
Right.
So, how do, how do your constituents feel about those speed humps? Or speed bumps? They're not humps, they're bumps.
Sure, speed bumps. I haven't received any negative feedback about them. I've only received positive feedback about them.
Yeah, I asked because, um, the speed humps are far less, well, I don't know.
They're more tolerable.
Yes, like the speed bumps, no, they're bumps. But people.
These are, these are manufactured units that you put down. Typically, a speed table or a speed hump has a, has a flat top on it.
Yeah.
Uh, with a gradual incline on either side.
A bump is a rounded thing like Ingalls has.
But these were a whole lot cheaper than putting a six thousand dollar asphalt.
We have a bunch of speed bumps. They're, they're real sharp.
But they're temporary, right?
You do have to slow down. Those will damage your car, yeah.
You can, you can leave them in permanent. I mean, it, it's, uh, they're made to take the beating, but.
Oh, for sure, but I also know that they're, that the bumps tend to generate complaints as well, so that's why I asked how the citizens were feeling about it over there.
I don't think it'll work on Rocky Branch.
Yeah, I don't know if Rocky Branch is an appropriate place for speed humps or bumps, but I think it's an appropriate place for a school zone. My only thought, and I, and I hate to keep bringing this up, but is that, well, we may have to consult with the fire department on South Street if they're going to use that for any kind of access because they're building a new fire station right there.
Good idea.
They have a problem with bumps or humps.
Make sure you talk to them.
So. I'll reach out to our county commissioner for sure and Chief Barron, but.
Okay, this, um, this doesn't have, um, an action item on it, so it won't be on tonight. We don't have to do this again, right? Um, all right, so let's, uh, hopefully, nobody has anything else. I think we've pretty well done that one. Uh, item four, Ashley Place stop sign request.
By ordinance, any additional stop signs placed in a neighborhood have to be approved by mayor and council. And I don't know if you can read my sketch. I pulled it off Google Maps, and it's a little bit lighter than I had wanted. We did a traffic, we did, we put the traffic counter out in Ashley Place in a couple of the straightaway sections, and it did not indicate we had a serious speeding problem. But, uh, the young lady that called me, uh, in fact, I backed this up with, with our solid waste guys that almost witnessed two head-on collisions. People come from both directions on Summer Cypress, and they cut that corner going into Bosom Wood Trail coming out like really, really short. And if there's a car sitting there, they almost get front end. I mean, so it's happened a couple of times. So, the recommendation is to put two additional stop signs at that intersection.
Does that make this a three-way stop?
Yes.
Okay. All the way stop, three times?
Yep, that's correct.
Now, the biggest problem in that neighborhood is no sidewalks now, and people park all over the street.
Oh, yeah.
So, you're blocked, they're moving over in a different lane. Um, any questions? Any problem with this being consent item number thirteen? Okay. Old Tanyard.
Okay, y'all are all aware, uh, we had an, an issue rear its head about a month ago, three weeks ago or so on Old Tanyard, uh, where the creek crossing is. Uh, Jameson and I have had this crossing on our radar for at least as long as I've been in Villarica. We had, when, when, uh, when the flow line in a corrugated metal pipe rusts out, when you have a flash storm and you have a, when you have a surcharge condition, in other words, you've got more water coming down the creek than the culverts can take, and it actually ends up going over the road. If you've got any holes in that pipe, what will happen is earth on top will start being sucked in and washing downstream. That's what happened here with the sinkhole that appeared on the shoulder. And, uh, that's the first indication that, you know, total failure can happen pretty much at any time during a flash storm at this point. Um, we reached out to, uh, Tim Grizzard and Associates, who actually, they were the contractors that did Flowers Culvert. One of the main reasons why we reached out to them is Flowers Culvert Project, we had to maintain one lane open for them to keep their bakery going.
That's their only way.
And Old Tanyard is exactly the same way. There's only one way in the neighborhood and one way out. So, one lane has to be maintained. So, they gave us a price quote, and you've got it in your packet on a not to exceed number of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. In my explanation, we, we got a price, Jameson got a price just before I got here to fix that thing, and it was a hundred and twenty grand back six, seven years ago. So, I didn't think this price was out, that, that far out of line, but we can save some dollars on that if the city will furnish the material and the contractor do the labor. That's what we basically did on Flowers. And it saved, you know, he made some money, city saved some money. I recommend we get this thing fixed because, like I say, if, if it collapses, then the neighborhood is stuck. There's no way to get them out.
Okay, we don't have anything, no attachments on that particular item.
No, we don't.
We don't.
Wait, I just found one. I have it on one screen and not on the other screen because.
I didn't include it in my packet to y'all. She, you added it, didn't you?
I've got, um, yeah, I've got a cover sheet on one screen and not on the other because one has gone through the way the citizens would because I couldn't get my password to work on this, so I went into it through the city website. But the one that's civic clerk, it is here, and I didn't know it was there because I was looking at the other one.
But it's, it's going to be a tedious project because the road, believe it or not, is more narrow on Old Tanyard than, than the driveway entrance was to Flowers. So, they're going to, you know, they'll have to, they'll have to take a backhoe and they'll have to dig a couple buckets worth, move out of the way of a car coming across, come back, start over again, come back, start over again. It's just twelve to fifteen days to fix it.
Well, you're showing on here a hundred and thirty-seven and a half thousand dollars.
Yes, but it won't be over that, and it'll be less because the city's going to furnish the material on it. All the concrete, all the gravel, all the, um, the pipe itself. But I, I would not wait, I wouldn't recommend waiting very much, very much longer on that because if we get a four-inch rain, that whole road may go.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, actually.
Like, do it.
I had a constituent, I'm pretty sure this is the same area, a constituent of mine actually pointed out back in, and I think we talked about it back in January, that they had concerns about it, so I'm glad that, you know, we're, well, I'm not glad that it's deteriorated to this condition, but glad that we're addressing it, so.
Well, you're, you're glad that, that, that the signs are there.
Right.
And the, the major collapse hadn't happened.
Correct.
We've got some time.
Yeah.
Okay, any opposition to making this consent item number fourteen?
No.
Okay, it's fourteen.
Yeah, I saved, I saved the, the ugliest stuff for last on my list, so.
Okay.
All, all your issues today are in my, in my ward.
Well, it's old Villarica, brother. I'm sorry.
I used to have a lot of old Villarica. Now, it's all of it. Uh, ER SNL change order in Carroll Vista subdivision.
Uh, Mr. Barber, I don't think I've ever talked this much at a public meeting in my entire life. I'm getting ready to go again. Okay. Back on our last paving contract back in twenty twenty, believe it or not, Baldwin Paving got our contract. We, we felt like we got a pretty decent price quote. Well, y'all, what happened in twenty twenty, it was COVID and everything else. Supply chain went nuts and, but anyway. Uh, Carroll Vista, if you don't know which neighborhood this is, and I refer to it as Coach Best's neighborhood. That's where he lives. And, uh, it's one of the, if not the first PUD, PUD development that Villarica ever had.
I think it was the first from what I heard. Fairfield is the only other one in Carroll County at that time.
What we did is we started in the back with the paving. You know, we went in with, with the, with the, uh, roller mill, and we milled, milled it down, topped the back street. We came up to the next street, started the mill, we got about four, five hundred feet down the street, and as the mill went by, water started coming up in the base. And we milled on further, and it started coming up everywhere. Well, part of that paving contract was when we redid the industrial park roads with FDR, full-depth reclamation, where they grind up everything and inject Portland cement, and you, they create basically a slab of concrete to put asphalt on. That's, that, that's how you fix this. So, we called the, um, subcontractor, and of course, the, the supply chain and everything else. But back then, Portland cement, you just about couldn't get it. I mean, it just went crazy. We could never get them back in there to finish those roads. Baldwin Paving ended up pulling out on us. Those roads have been sitting in that neighborhood like they are right now, getting worse since August of twenty twenty. So, that being said, with our current paving contract that mayor and council approved, ER SNL, three million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, that was done about, what, five weeks ago? Uh, we haven't started yet. We're getting ready to get issued a notice to proceed. I reached out to them, and I said, "Look, guys," I said, "Is there any way y'all could give us a price quote on finishing that neighborhood?" And the price they gave me was a little bit higher than I thought it would be, but it's seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents to complete that neighborhood totally. And to add that to the current paving contract, we're going to end up, e- even if I adjust the specifications on most of the paving, you know, cut down the thickness, do whatever I got to do to save stuff on some of the other streets, we're probably not going to have enough money to do the current contract and the change order. I'll do the best I can with it, but that, that neighborhood, we, we really, really need to fix that because it's just been ugly.
When you say they're going to fix it, they're going to go in, do what you said, they're going to put in a slab of concrete and pave on top of it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Is that the area up in that cul-de-sac where it's like all, yeah, I think I heard about that when I was out there visiting?
Oh, yes. It's, it's terrible, and, and, you know. This is the only option that I could come up with, given the fact that we've already got a paving company on contract. You know, we do a change order to add it because it wasn't a part of the original contract for this amount, and I would recommend starting with this neighborhood and just work our way till we run out of dollars on our Sixteenth Street list that we have.
Matter of fact.
That, that's as, that, that's as plain as I can put it.
Councilman Montan.
So, Bobby, I mean, as, and I just, I'm, listen, I'm, I'm totally in support of this, as y'all would probably presume, okay? Uh, but I, you know, Bobby, I think my recollection from that paving contract was that we already probably over, the contract was probably more than what we could afford anyway, and I think that was, if I recall.
That is, that is true, but, and, and as, as you recall, or you may not, the paving specifications that I put together on that Sixteenth Street list, and I think I used this word, and you're probably going to remember, are robust.
Okay.
And with doing some give and take, still be able to get that, that Sixteenth, um, street list done for less than the three point seven seven two million. But this seven hundred and ninety-four.
Yeah, I mean, I just, for, I mean, obviously, I think the rest of the council realizes this, but obviously, this is going to be a big chunk of that three point seven million dollars, which may have not actually been three point seven million dollars in the first place. So, I think we only budgeted three million or something like that, if I remember, or less than that. So, um, I mean, this, this neighborhood is, it has been a problem. I mean, I remember shortly after I got elected, speaking with Coach Best, and he, he called the fact out that there's water on the ground, and that is, that is the issue, um, and it's something that we've known since twenty twenty, since twenty nineteen, and it's horrible over there. I mean, it's, it is like, you know, driving on a Afghani war zone or something.
Well, you know, jokingly, and I shouldn't joke, but I mentioned to a couple of folks that, you know, you just about need a four-wheel drive truck to get back and forth to your driveway in some, in some of the areas over there.
Well, whether it's your ward or not, this has been going for years over there, and there's something to be said for customer service and how long certain citizens should have to put up with something like that on their street. If there's no other questions, uh, can we make this consent item number fifteen?
And y'all remember, the, the paving contract is a unit price contract. In other words, if you get to a point when you're like, uh, "We're not going to have enough money," then you just stop the contractor.
Right, okay.
All right, uh, number seven, Georgia Power Lighting Services Agreement.
I don't have it. I don't have your agreement.
Oh. Anyway, while she's getting it pulled up, we, uh, this contract with Georgia Power is to, is to install streetlights along Villarica Parkway, uh, not Mira Lake Connect, Villarica Parkway.
I'm glad to see that name actually show up somewhere.
Yeah. Hey, yeah, you know, even retired and just working, you know, for Villarica part-time, it seems like there's just never enough hours in the day to, to fix stuff. But anyway, uh, Georgia Power now, they require a prepayment upfront to cover the fixtures and whatever, whatever other costs they have. This particular amount's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, that's for thirty-four street lights, and they're the decorative post-top lights. They'll look really nice. Uh, we, we recommend approval. I mean, it's got to be done.
It's funded by the Eastside Ten. It's a good thing.
Any questions? Are we good with consent item number sixteen?
Mr. Barber, sorry, anything else? All right, uh, we're going to move into, uh, public comment then. Oh, yeah, let's do that. I'm sorry. All right, I'll call them out, and if I miss anything, let me know. All right, consent item number one is Gold, uh, the Goldust Recreation HVAC. Uh, number two, appointment of Main Street board member. Number three, Main Street board member. Number four, Main Street board member. Number five, downtown development member. Number six, downtown development member. Number seven, license agreement with Los Cowboys. Uh, number eight, the July third fireworks. Number nine, July third professional service contract with RCS Productions. Wait, that's nine. That's nine, and number ten is the Clegg Horn Pump Station. Uh, pump, yeah, fourth main relocation. Uh, number eleven, approval of property and liability insurance renewal with Germa. Number twelve, approve the excess liability insurance. Uh, that's for cyber liability. Number thirteen, Ashley Place stop sign request. Number fourteen, Old Tanyard Road culvert repair. Number fifteen, SNL change order in Carroll Vista subdivision. Number sixteen, Georgia Power Lighting Service Agreement. Anybody see anything else? Okay, good. All right, so we'll move into public comment. I'll try to read through this quickly. I, I have one person, unless there's someone else that would like to give a comment as well. There's a signup sheet as you enter the chambers. I will call on those individuals first, anyone addition, with additional, um, anyone additional wishing to speak who did not sign up will be given an opportunity to do so as well. As you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each individual will be given three minutes. Those addressing the mayor and council may feel free to speak openly on the matter you wish to bring to our attention, but we do ask that you do so in a respectful manner and refrain from any, any uncivil discourse. As an elected body, we don't typically, typically engage in debate or question and answer during public comments. This is your time. However, if your question or concerns necessitate a response from the staff level, I'll be happy to have the city manager contact you in a reasonable timeframe within the next several days or sometime just point you to a staff member that may be able to answer it right here. As your elected officials, we do value the opportunity to hear from citizens and those who have a vested interest in our city. Mr. Greg Roberts.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. Greg Roberts, twenty-one forty-two Burkeville Street. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to have a minute. Uh, I'm here for the same thing. I've been here for the last two meetings and for the next forty-two, if it doesn't change in the meantime. But, um, five, six months ago, a letter made its way through the neighborhood by your highest ranking city employee, highest-ranking city employee, a city official, taking a side in a political race. I have issue with that. I believe any city or county anywhere would. The state level wouldn't tolerate it. It's being allowed to be tolerated, because US mayor can't do anything about it. Now, I'm not saying there should be a termination. What I would really like to see is another letter circulated through the neighborhood, identical to that one, saying, "I'm sorry, didn't mean to sidestep with the citizens." Because that's exactly what the individual did. It's just unacceptable. It's completely unacceptable. Now, this meeting today has been great, it's been the best one that I've been to, probably ever at Villarica. I hadn't been to a lot, but once I found out about this, as I mentioned a couple of times ago in January, some neighbors were saying, "Man, you know what's going on up there at City Hall?" I'm like, "No, what? They're, they're basically hamstringing our mayor." I'm like, "You gotta be kidding me." I could not believe it. As a citizen, I apologize to you. So, I, I just don't understand why that's been tolerated, why it's been allowed. So, I'll come and mention it every time you've got a meeting going on, until I feel like as a citizen and my fellow neighbors and taxpayers, until we've received some direct apology. I don't mean somebody looking at me and saying sorry, I, I mean apologizing to the citizens. Short of that, I'm not sure that it's a correctable offense, because it is a grievance toward the citizens who voted a particular way. And for the two or three council members that supported that, that's a grievance toward the voters of the city of Villarica. That's just a shame. A couple of things have been mentioned here today. You mentioned perception, mayor, so that tells the citizens who are not coming here, there's a perception, there's just a, it's just a mess up here. Now, this meeting doesn't show that, but they're not gonna watch that. They didn't come, they're gonna still have the perception tomorrow that it's a mess over at Villarica City Hall. Then a staff member mentioned, "We need to set the example." Well, he spoke it correctly. He was not the target of what I was talking about, but it was a mouthful. You guys have to set the example, your staff leadership has to set the example. At a citizen, as a citizen, I expect that of you. You have great employees across the board, but the one sitting at the top is an issue for me and hundreds of citizens of this good town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during public comment time? All righty. We didn't adjourn, so we don't have to unadjourn. See you at 6 o'clock.